That's fairly typical, right?
No. Yeah.
Running late. No problem. Thank you.
Almost. Let's see. You should have got my message. Did you get anything yet? I have you.
You can't see it. Okay. Okay. Brand new, so we're not sure if we're going to even use it.
Sorry about that. Good evening. It's Monday, June 12th, 2023, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. I see that Mr. Dennington is here via Zoom. Does he want to call the Select Board to order?
At six thirty-three PM, I'll call the Select Board meeting to order.
Very good. Thank you. And the first item on the agenda. Oh, Shopsy. Is, do you have a quorum?
I should, let's see, Patty Fiori? I don't think so.
Nope.
Thank you, Jesse.
So the first item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities. And this is our initial kickoff of our public outreach campaign to gain input on how Southborough can comply with the state's new requirements for zoning under the MBTA Communities, which is Chapter 48, Section 3, which will be at the greatest advantage to the town and its residents. And we have, we're starting with a PowerPoint. Take it away, Colleen. Yes, Andrew?
Yeah, I can't hear Colleen. I don't know if she has a microphone with her or if she was speaking.
She's trying to get the PowerPoint up.
Okay.
Here it comes. Bear with us for a minute. Lot of moving parts tonight. It's up on the screen. There you go.
Okay. That's kind of good enough. Right? A PowerPoint we just put together with some resources that we have collected from Chappa and Mass, what is?
M A P C?
M A P C. Yes, that's all. I'm sorry. So, so anybody that doesn't know what the MBTA multifamily zoning is, we're going to kind of explain it to you right now. And any questions, please feel free to ask. Where's mine? So they, they like
Go quick on the next page on your
I don't know why it's not doing that.
Here it is.
There we go. Okay, I'll have to do it from here.
Just do it.
So zoning 101, what is zoning and why does it matter? What impact does zoning have on our communities? And why was Section 3A passed? It's a, this whole MBTA Communities is Chapter 48, Section 3A is the legal number. What are the requirements for Southborough? And what will this look like in Southborough? And what are the benefits of multifamily housing? And how can you be involved? So zoning code regulates how we use land. It includes the shape, height and size of buildings, distance between buildings and other land uses, and what the land can be used for, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, and open space. Can also include requirements for things like parking, affordability, and design. So this is the answer to zoning matters, how land use policies shape our lives. Why does zoning matter? Zoning codes are moral documents. Oh, I didn't take that out. Sorry. Zoning codes are rules for what can be built and where determine who you, who can live, work, and play in our communities. If done correctly, it is one of the most powerful tools we have to meet our goals for housing, transportation, and climate, and diversity. Many Massachusetts communities have stringent and inflexible zoning that has restricted the ability, the ability of building anything other than a single-family home. This pushes out people who can't afford a single-family home as well as people who want to live in multifamily housing. What is the impact of restrictive zoning? Restrictive zoning creates barriers to addressing our housing needs, our housing shortage, and when there is only so much housing to go around, prices will naturally skyrocket. As of 2022, a typical home in the Boston metro area now costs $652,000. Only one in 12 residents in the Boston metro area has the annual income needed to buy a typical home. Racial wealth gap, 70% of white households in greater Boston own their own home, compared to 37% of black households and only 31% of Hispanic households. Why was Section 3A passed? Growing a healthy and sustainable regional economy requires providing housing options at a variety of scales and a wide range of price points. Decades of underproducing housing across every municipality has created a serious housing shortage. High home prices are pushing out college students, young families, older adults, and even people with moderate incomes. This poses a serious threat to our economy as working families are squeezed out and many residents are leaving the state. Why was section, oh, this is continued. We leave our most important housing policy decisions to local governments, but these local governments aren't elected to think regionally. State leadership stepped in to correct, to course correct. MBTA multifamily zoning requirements, Section 3A, signed into law by Charlie Baker in 2021. This is why does MBTA multifamily zoning law make sense for Massachusetts? What does 3A do? Legalize multifamily housing near transit as of right. It impacts all 177 MBTA communities. Rapid transit commuter rail, adjacent communities, and adjacent small-town communities. Minimum allowance of 15 acres, 15 units per acre by right. Zone must be of reasonable size, no age restrictions, and must be suitable for families. Certain percentage must be within a half a mile of the transit station if applicable. What are the benefits of multifamily housing? More housing options, more access, and greater affordability. Older adults can downsize. College kids can come home and rent their first apartment. Young couples can become homeowners. Low-income families can find housing stability. Middle-income families have greater mobility. Small businesses can stay close to their grand, I'm sorry, small businesses can retain employees. Grandparents can stay close to their grandchildren. We all basically benefit. This is the missing, they keep calling it the missing middle housing. So we have a lot of single-family here, and then you have the big, big apartment buildings. So it's all these in the middle duplexes, triplexes. So what does 15 units per acre look like in Southborough? Mimi and I came up with a couple of pictures that could kind of show you what it means. This here is 15 Main Street, nope, 12, I'm sorry, 12 East Main Street. It's apartments over eight units. There's nine units in this building. It's on three quarters of an acre of land, which makes the density at 12.03. Units per acre, sorry. These are a couple of others. Get this out of my way. Eight Newton Street is the first one. And that comes out to be, it's a three-family home on point one five acres. And that's up high. That's 19.78 units per acre. Three Pleasant Street is the next one, the blue one. And this one is a three-family home on point two five acres, so a quarter acre. And the density in this lot is 11.87. Here we have 36 Main Street is the next one. It's listed as multiple houses on a parcel. And there's three residential units here on just under a quarter of an acre, and the parcel density is 13.26. And we have One Prentice Street, which is a two-family. And it's on point one nine acres. So the density works out to be 10.33 units per acre. We have 16 Cherry Street, student housing, two residential units. The acreage is point one five. And the parcel density is 13.64. And then this one is on Turnpike Road, mixed-use commercial with residential, 61 Turnpike. There's five residential units, and it's on just under a half an acre. The density is 11.61 units per acre. So what are the requirements for Southborough? Southborough's a transit-type commuter rail. That's our community. So our deadline is December 31st of 2024.
What's the deadline for?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the deadline is to come up, basically this whole effort is to come up with a multifamily housing bylaw, by right. And the deadline to do that and have it approved by town meeting is December 31st, 2024. Current, the housing units that we will be required to, to zone for is 750. The minimum land area is 50 acres. It doesn't have to be all in one spot. 20% of that has to be near the commuter rail station, which is 10 acres. And the multifamily zoning capacity is 750. I said before, I'm sorry, the percentage of district to be located near the station is 20%.
So the 750 is in the 50 acres, you have to be able to have 750 units?
Yes. That, that's basically, so that you can ask the question out.
Yeah, I just was asking for clarification that the 750 units meant that's the number of units that is required for that 50-acre designated MBTA community.
Acres at 15 units.
15.
Fifty acres at
15 units per acre equals 750 units for that 50 acres required.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that. So the existing density around a half-mile radius from the station, we took this off of, you can kind of see it up there in the picture. It's called residency, residency. And it was created by M A P C. And this is, Mimi actually was able to draw a half circle because the other half of the circle is in Hoppington. The total residential units in this colored area are 318. The neighborhood area is 265.79 acres. Neighborhood density is 1.2 units per acre. And this shows the 10 acres that needs to be within the within the T station area.
Yeah, so out of that 265.79 acres, we need to find 10 acres to
10 acres.
To comply with this zoning requirement.
So are any questions? This, our next steps is really outreach, outreach, outreach. The plan
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Yep.
So that half circle represents 265.79 acres.
Yep.
And right now that's showing 1.2 units per acre. 318 units in that whole thing. And we have to determine a 10-acre area in that half circle that can accommodate these higher-density housing units.
Right. The, the half circle is one half-mile from
Yeah, from the station. So within a half
So somewhere in there.
We have to find 10 acres that can accommodate this new MBTA Communities bylaw that requires this higher density.
Right.
Correct? Okay. And so then 40 acres
elsewhere.
Somewhere else in town that is provides some accessibility to the transit station. You know, you hope, the closer the better, but anywhere in town would suffice if we could find a location that would really suit this. Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
You're welcome. So the Planning Board still needs to discuss whether it would be wise to create a working group. We also need to schedule public forums to get as much input from the public as we possibly can. We'd like to ask them, where should the overlay districts be located? Let the community sort of decide what they think. Mimi had a good idea about, what did you watch the video from Lexington? And they had a forum where all of the attendees got to mark out on their map where they wanted the places to be. So they have several. And actually Lexington is the only community that has a, has actually passed the bylaw from the town meeting, but they still have not received approval from the state yet. We'll see what happens with that. And then, you know, in the end, we'll be writing a new overlay bylaw. We sort of think the overlay way to go is better because then you can use the same bylaw and just figure out the, the areas where it's going to lay on top. That leaves the underlying zoning in place. And then if somebody comes in with multifamily, it's by right, and they can do it there. Anything I'm missing?
No, thank you, Colleen.
Yep.
Questions or comments, Mr. Stein?
Well, great job. I really liked how you used examples in town. That was extremely helpful for illustrating the units per acre. So when we say by right with a minimum of, with those minimum units per acre, are municipalities allowed to, within the overlay district, put in any restrictions at all on number of units? So what about on height or setbacks? Or parking, you know, site plan review type stuff? In other words, well, like what control do we have within the overlay district?
In writing the bylaw, you can have suggested design guidelines, but you can't have any real requirements. They have to be able to do it without any special permits or variances.
So
You can do height, you can do height setbacks.
Okay, so we can put in, we don't, we can't restrict number of units, but we can restrict height and setbacks.
Well, number of units, you can restrict it 15.
Okay, so we can actually just make it the minimum.
15.
And make that the maximum.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I support this, and I'm going to do my best as a Planning Board member to, you know, make this happen for the town because I I support affordable housing and want, you know, things to change from the perspective of housing costs in the state, but we do have to get a pass town meeting. And based on my experience, the best way to do that is to make it, you know, something where the town, or we can, you know, say to the residents, look, this is, this is the best path forward because if we don't, and this is my theory, I, this wasn't in your presentation, but I believe that towns that, that don't pass that will probably end up having something enforced on them by the state. And in my experience, it's always better to pass something and come to an agreement with what we can control and an outcome that, you know, a compromise that that will work for the majority of the residents at town meeting. Thanks.
So we kind of fluttered over the actual law that was passed and signed by Governor Baker was the housing choice law. And if we are qualified, which we're supposed to be doing in this bylaw, the vote changes for town meeting. It's a simple majority instead of the three-quarters. And Lexington was, there's passed, but it was shy of the two-thirds by 10, 12 votes. So it would not have passed had it been, you know, the regular threshold.
Ms. Houlihan?
Thank you. I echo Mr. Stein's compliment. This presentation, I think it's really clear, crisp, doesn't leave a lot of speculation, so, which is nice. It lays it all out. It's a nice job on that. I agree. I am in support of something that we can get through by right. And I think it's just a matter of figuring that out. I know the question on, on here was to what we could do for outreach. I think what we're challenged with as a, as a town is just the, I'm going to say the school-aged parents that don't get involved unless it's something like directly in their area. So I think we should really try to leverage sporting events and other types of activities in the schools to try and get outreach. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if the Planning Board is going to be able to do all that, but having some volunteers within the community to help be advocates for that. So having a working group, I think, wouldn't be such a bad idea to be able to promote that. My other question was around funding for this. That half, sorry, is it half-mile?
Yep.
Are people within that half-mile going to be directly notified? In the sense that I think it would be in our best interest to let them know that their, their area has been designated part of this MBTA community, and they should be aware. So to have some sort of email, well, I don't think we have their emails, but a letter campaign that we can afford to, to fund through some of the monies. Because I think they should be aware too, because they should definitely be the ones making some of those or having a voice.
And that, that was going to be sort of the, the starting point was to do a town-wide mailing. And we haven't come up with the flyer yet, but it'll be, what is MBTA Communities? You know, and, and describe a little bit of those things, how it's going to affect, it could be anywhere in town. We'd like input as to how to go about this.
Yeah, not a bad idea. And the, my last comment would be social media. Facebook or Instagram or something where we're able to kind of promote and make people aware because they are on social media. Maybe you can do some TikTok dances.
Yeah, yeah. We have, I've already got a commitment from Miss Terry over there to record a information session. You know, when we clean up our, finally get a, a nice PowerPoint, we, we could record it in this room and have it played over and over again on Southborough. You know, community access.
Thank you, Mr. Maria.
Oh, thank you. No, I really support this as well. I like the idea of a, of a subcommittee to kind of really focus on this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the town. I really thank you guys for taking the lead on, on this, putting it in a positive light. I know that there's some people that, you know, still kind of negative about it, and I'm sure we're going to hear about it as the outreach begins, but I mean, it's an opportunity to talk through it and educate. And it's great that we have some help from the state as well, and that there's already a Lexington to look, you know, to look at as, you know, something that's, you know, past and how they did it. And, you know, just want to say, say thank you. I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I think it will really revitalize part of our town. And it also comply with the state, so I'm really happy with the work so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. Colleen, thank you for the presentation. I agree with a lot of what has been said already. I think outreach on this is going to be key. Marnie, I could not agree more with making sure that the residents within that potential half-mile know what's going on. We've seen it a million times that if it doesn't necessarily happen in your neighborhood, a lot of people don't know. And I think that's going to be the challenge on this, is making the public aware of what's going on. And just one quick question to Mimi or Colleen. Are we able to add an affordability piece to this zoning? An affordability requirement?
10%. No more than 10%.
No more. So we couldn't do more than that. Okay, that was my other question.
With the caveat, you can do up to 20 if you can prove that it wouldn't frustrate.
Yeah, it's financially feasible.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Colleen. I, those pictures are very helpful. And if anyone hasn't been on that residency, residency website, it's very interesting, and it shows the whole town in the darker colors are higher density. And I, you know, when someone says 15 units an acre, you're thinking apartment buildings. But that's not necessarily true. And if we can try and encourage like three, four, five family homes, I think that would be very advantageous.
Do you want to go to the board members?
I, I will. And I, I spent the day creeping on Lexington's website because they have so much information there. They have, they did 23 hearings. Some of those were public They did twenty-three hearings, um, some of those were public forums. And as Colleen mentioned, they did a, a form that they had about a hundred people there and they broke up into groups. They all had a. A map and they stuck stickers on it where they thought that the, um, the zone should be. Lexington has several different, over two hundred and twenty-seven acres. Um, so they were allowed to do, they were able to do some things that you can't really require within the statute, but they were so. Uh, much above that, uh, fifty acres, they were able to like require. Uh, mixed use commercial on the first floor in the downtown. Um, and then they took. All the stickers, uh, on those, I think they were like six different tables, six different maps. And like compiled them all together and they ended up pretty close to what that was with what their, uh, final. Uh, zoning districts was. So it was, uh, it's very interesting, a very, lots and lots of information on their, their website. Mr. Dennington?
Hi, um, Colleen, I thought that was a great presentation. I won't really repeat most, many of the comments that were, um. Have already been said before, but just a quick comment on the vote that was taken in Lexington, which got some press coverage. I thought it was interesting that kind of some of the gist of the, uh, commentary. And for example, the Boston Globe about that was it's really kind of starting to see a change and. You know, usually I think the prevailing view has been that in suburban communities. Um, people will be resistant to these types of zoning changes and that there it was a little bit of even. Surprise the fact that, um, the community came together and supported it. And I think it reflects that opinions have started to change due to just the really dramatic nature of the increase in, um. Um, the price you have to pay for, to get a, to buy a first time, um, home. And also the realization that, you know, everyone has to, um. Everyone has kids and, uh, you know, the next generation has to find a new, has to find a first house and, um. You want to live within like a hundred mile Boston now, it's difficult to, um, find an affordable. Uh, first home. So, you know, it's all just stressing why, um, this is something that we should, um. We should do in a way that works for us. Um, just one thought here is that, um. We have our select board, uh, goal setting, um, retreat, that's retreat in parentheses. Cause, um, it's really just at the public safety, uh, building, um, training room tomorrow. And, you know, I think one of the things we're going to be thinking about is really how we can support you as a board in, um. And ensuring that this is a successful effort and is passed before December. Uh, end of December, twenty twenty-four. It's really one where I see the planning board is really kind of taking the, the lead on it and a lot of the, the drafting. Um, but certainly open for ways of where you, how you see the select board can be. Supportive of and complimentary of your efforts. Um, at least from what I've heard from prior. Discussions on this is that my understanding is, um, your, your board is going to try to take a crack at first presenting. A proposed bylaw to town meeting for the annual town meeting in March twenty twenty-four. With the idea that if, um, if, we certainly hope it is successful, but if it wasn't, then you would have another shot. To get it done at a subsequent town meeting before the end of twenty twenty-four. So, um. That's all I've got to say. And, um, if, if anything I've said is incorrect, please, please let me know. Since I, I zoomed in, I don't, and I see Mr. Stivers is also in the online audience. But who else from the select board, if, if anyone is there in the room with you?
Mr. Stivers, uh, Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Landry.
Okay, so there's four of us. Okay.
But we, before we get to the, to the rest of the select board, uh, Dorian, I think you have a quorum now. Oh, oh, okay. All right, never mind then.
We have Jesse and, and Anders on that.
So do you want to call shops? Thank you. Select board.
If, if there's actually, if I could say one other thing, I think that'll be very interesting that we've talked about before is. In the, in the map you had of half a mile within the train station, the twenty-one Highland property is within that. Cir- circle, semi-circle. So that, you know, is something that I, I continue to be pretty focused on is. Cause you know, you look within that semi-circle, you say where, where would you put the zone? And that's, I've always thought that. We would want to include the, the twenty-one Highland property.
Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Al Hamilton. Is this on? It is, okay, good. Um, a member of the select board. Couple of quick questions. Uh, thank you for the presentation. It was, uh, helpful. Are there other ancillary rules and regulations that we would have to address? To affect the fifteen units per acre? Uh, that, and the one I'm thinking of that's obvious would be, uh, are there septic regulations, for example, that we would, as it makes. We don't achieve the goal unless we can actually build the units and, you know, having, uh, the ability to build something fifteen units by right. If you can't, uh, deal with the waste that those buildings, units produce. Uh, so my question is, are there other ancillary regulations that would have to be addressed to actually affect this change in, in, in the, in the real world?
So, um, zoning has nothing to do with septic, whether you can or can't. Um, maximize the building on a lot because of the septic is not within zoning.
No, I, I understand that. My question is, if we're going to take, should we take a holistic approach? Which says we actually want to encourage this type of development. And if so, are there other rules and regulations we ought to be thinking about addressing? Perhaps not at the planning board, perhaps at the Board of Health? Or the, the, the select board, are there other rules and regulations that we would need to address in order to actually achieve the goal? And I, I would hope that, you know, as we move forward, you would think about this. So we're dealing with it in a holistic way so that, you know. We, we haven't got some sort of hidden gotcha at, at the end where we have this by right, but no one can actually exercise the right because. They can't, uh, deal with some other set of regulations.
We'll continue to look at that. But I think a lot of the septic regulations, there's state law, which we, we can't change.
I, I merely brought it up as, as an example. Uh, another one is, you know, I know that in modern. Uh, multifamily units above, uh, two units, you know, you've got to put in fire protection. And there are rules and regulations related to firewalls. All of those adds considerable expense to the cost of building a multifamily home. So it might, I guess I'm encouraging us to think about this holistically. So that when we, if we actually implement this, that these units can actually be built and built in a way that, you know, is, is economically viable.
Can I just add something? Al, um, in referring to what you're talking about, it's Corina over here. Hi, um. So things like building code, I'm sure you're aware, those things are not exempted, all those safety. But what you're implying is that maybe the types of units that are built to get density are ones that aren't. Um, triggering some of those building code requirements like sprinklers and things like that.
Y- yes, you know, I, I'm simply encouraging us to think about this as a larger problem, just zoning. Because I think the, the challenge to building affordable homes is more than zoning. It is also has to do with building codes, building regulations. A whole bunch of, uh, protective practices and, uh, a variety of other rules and regulations that, that have to, uh. And hoops that have to be jumped, jumped through that add cost. To the process of building and as a consequence, uh, impact the affordability of, of residences. Now, I, I'll give you a simple example. I built an addition on my house this year. And I built two other additions, um, on, at previous homes. And in the previous two ones, I threw up a set of plans by hand, went down to the building department and got a building permit. Now I need an architect and an engineer and a surveyor. So, you know, I'm out ten thousand dollars before I've even, uh, talked to a contractor. It's those sorts of things need to, I think, be addressed as well. So that we can in fact have, you know, the, the true goal of having affordable housing. We need to think holistically about the total cost and the impacts of, uh, of, of other regulations. That can, uh, stymie the, the achievement of this goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does, uh, one second, Tom. Anyone else on the select board have any comment? Oh, Ms. Houlihan?
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I agree. I'd also say thinking about holistically. Cause I think that's what we're, we fall short as a town is really connecting the dots. And all I can think of is Legacy Farms in Hopkinton and they ran out of water. Right? So it's really being thoughtful about planning and how to think about the infrastructure and what the impact is, even if it is completely utilized. And I think we have to have those types of plans in mind when we build these. So I completely agree with you on how to be a little bit more holistic. Not sure I know how to do it, but I would agree that we should all try. Thanks.
Mr. Stivers or Ms. Landry? Mr. Biscule?
Thanks, Mimi. I, I, I wanted to make just two points, one of which is just to dovetail onto that last conversation. I think part of this, the beauty of this, um, for lack of a better term, of this bylaw, of this, of this law, the statute. Is that the, um, units have to be zoned as a right in the zoning bylaws. So that eliminates a lot of the hoops that come into play with some of these things. And, and then also just the. Mr. Hamilton's larger point of, of all these other costs that go into developing property. If you have the engineering and architects and things like that, they all cost a lot of money. This particular bylaw, fifteen units an acre is really. Incentivizes, you know, the regular developers who are professional to come in here to, to cut. And they can make money by having this density of units. So I think you're, we're really going to bring in people who do this stuff for a living. And have surveyors and teams of architects almost on staff that they, that they can come in and work through all the. All the, um, requirements of the building code and everything like that. And, and they should, you know, they're, they're supposed to comply with all the, all the other laws. But that's one thing that I, I think helps them, the real feasibility of, of these things being built if the zoning is adopted. Is that you'll have professional developers coming in and taking, running all those traps if they, if they know they can get these units as a right. Um, and the, secondly, real, really quickly, number two, um, I just wanted to follow up on maybe a conversation you and I had at the last joint meeting. About, I know, I, I apologize for coming in late, but there was a talk about what this proposed new zoning district would cover. And I think, I'm not sure where we left off. I came in late, so I apologize. I'm not sure what the current proposed configuration is, but the last time it went around this, it was. That we are going to squeeze the minimal, minimum of ten, ten acres around in the transit zone near the MBTA station. And the other eighty percent or forty acres out of the fifty was going to be all the EMC development site. Um, so I'm not sure if that's changed, but one thing, oh, it hasn't.
We have, so we have no, no zone, no.
Oh, you're still working on, okay.
Except for the ten acres within a half mile is a requirement.
Okay.
Of the statute.
Thing I wanted to point out to you to just chew on as you, as you as a planning board developing this, this. Is that in the DHCD guidelines, it does say that, um, the zone is supposed to be a neighborhood wide district. And they really say explicitly, it's really not supposed to be a single development site. For a project that the town intends to approve anyway. So I guess I've, I've a little bit of concern that if our fifty acres is, you know, eighty percent the EMC site. And ten percent. The, the MBTA's area, I'm afraid that the DHC is going to view that as. Basically making most of our zoning district as a single development site. So just something I, I'd encourage you to consider as you, as you develop the site.
So Tom, if, let's say we did that and that happened, what would happen after that?
Well, as I understand, Jay, that one is here as well, but I think the process is we're going to make the proposal. You all, the town is going to make the proposal to the D H C D is what our proposed zoning district is.
So we don't just pass it? And then, because normally, if I'm not mistaken, I think our warrant goes to the Attorney General to get ratified.
I'm not sure how that happens. If it doesn't, if DHC, DC says no, I'm not sure where we are if we have December thirty.
That's a good thing to know.
Let me just interject here. Uh, DHCD will look at one zone proposal per municipality and tell you whether or not they'll. They, they'll accept it before town meeting.
So your preliminary determination from them is the.
Yeah.
Whether they think this will fly. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else with their hand up? Any other questions or comments?
Did put up the excluded land?
Mimi, can I add one other comment?
Oh, sure. One second, Tim.
Sorry, just, just, just quickly, I mean, the, the area that we're looking at for the, um. The, uh, within the half mile of the transit station, those are half acre lots. So I think we need to, as we move forward, to consider that I'm a developer and I buy a half acre lot. What is the number? You can do a density up to fifteen. Well, half on a half acre lot would be seven and a half. So I think we need to consider that as well, that there are going to be some lots that you're going to be in a half position, one way or the other. And that could certainly increase the numbers as well. So I just wanted to kind of mention that as, as we go forward as to how we want, might want to address that. Cause most of those lots are half acre or less. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Lit?
And Lit, Woodland Road. Um, I know this has been going on for a while and at one point you and selectmen sent a letter commenting on this, uh, out. And at that point, I think it was observed that we're in the unfortunate position of having our train station, not in the center of town. But right on the edge next to Hopkinton. And I sort of wonder if there's an update on any opportunities to collaborate with Hopkinton. Um, in terms of, of doing something that, that, that makes sense together as opposed to, you know, fighting it all on, on our own. And it's worth noting that in the interim, you know, we're also working with Hopkinton on their water issue. Though it seems like it might be a receptive time to try and, um, do something that isn't, you know, a pocket on our side and a pocket on their side.
Certainly. I think we're, we're open to anything at this time. And they have, they did change the guidelines since, um. All the municipalities commented. Originally it was fifty acres. In Southborough, within a half mile. Anyone else?
We have, uh, five attendees, no hands up in the Zoom waiting room.
Hey, very good. And as just to reiterate, um, we hope to do lots and lots of outreach. I, you know, have to, uh, run it through the rest of the board. But thought the idea that Littleton did with, Littleton, Lexington did with the maps was, was a really good idea and a really great first, uh, forum. So thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the excluded lands are, I put up there, this came right out of the, uh. So town owned land is excluded.
Sorry. You have to get up to the mic. Sorry.
Sorry, just another point about the DHCD guidelines. I think those excluded areas. Aren't excluded from the fifty acres. I think they're only excluded because there's two different ways if you look at the DHCD guidelines, or maybe. Maybe you, you and I should compare notes offline, but I think the way the DHCD guideline says, there's two possibilities for the minimum. Zoning district size. One, it's got to be fifty acres. Or two, it's, if it's lower, one and a half percent of the developable land in that municipality. And that's the only place where the developability of the land comes into play. I don't think it comes into play in the fifty acres. So all those exclusions, I believe only apply to the determination of the one and a half percent. Option. I don't believe they apply to the, to the fifty acre option, but that may be something.
I, I'd have to check on that because that doesn't really seem to make sense. Cause you could do a fifty acre pond and say that you comply.
Yeah, I, I know, I, you know, I, I looked at this closely when I was doing the twenty-one Highland. I looked at, and I, that was my reading originally as well. And I said that at public meetings and in our, in our, in our twenty-one Highland meetings. said that at public meetings and in our in our in our twenty one Highland meetings. And when I went back and looked at it more closely, if you look at the language, that's the that definition of developable land does not does not apply to the, does not, is not mentioned in the in the fifty acre minimum uh zoning district requirement.
I'll check on that.
The afterwards of maybe if you.
Well, I'll I'll find out from somebody who knows far more than me, like someone at DCHD. We ready to move on? Next item on the agenda. Oh, sure. Go ahead. Vote to adjourn the um Shopsey meeting, Andrew?
Um, the Shopsey meeting or the select board meeting?
Shopsey.
Is Dorian there?
Yes.
Oh, there's been a motion. Okay.
She's asking for a roll call vote from you.
Stein, I.
Thank you.
And that was at seven twenty two. Adjourned, so we know for a record.
So the next item on the agenda is uh town council's support to the planning board. And I had um asked that the select board come and have a discussion with us on um this item. So the the planning board hadn't been receiving timely legal support, um, which makes it very difficult to fulfill our charge and to serve the residents of Southborough. On May seventeenth, the town planner and I, uh, town administrator, town council, had a very good and productive meeting, and I left feeling that the issues would be addressed moving forward. Then after the meeting, I received um a call from a member of the select board saying that they had uh directed town council to intervene on a um on a project which is currently under site plan review and in the midst of a public hearing before the planning board, which um I should mention, site plan review is not within the jurisdiction of the select board. So I what I wanted to uh discuss with the select board is how can we avoid undue influence on projects that are with solely within the planning board's jurisdiction? And if um town council works solely for the planning board, I mean, for the select board, can the planning board have counsel assigned to us? And should I start with you, Mr. Dennington?
Hi, yeah. Um, and I know, um, Mimi, you and I have talked about this um offline, but if there's any particular situation where you feel that um you need some support or you're, you feel you need some um assistance, I'm always happy to to help and you um reach out to me individually. Um, you know, I think really the um the main thing that drew most of us here for the select board was kind of the joint discussion that we had um just a moment ago about the MBTA Communities Act. So um, you know, I'm really here more in in listening mode, but if there's any, is is Jay here as well?
He is.
Yeah. So I I mean, I was encouraged to hear that you had a meeting with um with Jay and Mark, and you found it was very productive, and I'm happy to build off you know, the progress that you feel that you made in that meeting.
What I should have done is gone down the planning board. I'm sorry. Mr. Stein.
So um, I guess I'll address my question to Mr. Dennington, um, as you're the current chair of the select board. What is our protocol for access to legal counsel? Do we send, and this is my ignorance because I've never chaired this board, uh, so my question is maybe also to you, Mimi, but at the same time, but is it that we request a legal opinion by sending Mr. Tallerman an email? And then does Mr. Tallerman then get confirmation from you, Mr. Dennington, that he is to take action on the basis of our request? Or is that at his discretion as to whether or not and and what in what timeframe to take action? What is the protocol?
Go through town administrator.
Okay. Is that something that we can fix so that we have a more expedient process for access to legal opinions, representation, et cetera? Mr. Dennington?
When you say that it can fix, I I don't know that. I mean, so I I've I'm now just the chair for uh I'm the chair for a couple of weeks, but again, if there's some particular situation where you feel like you would like um quicker guidance, please feel to reach out to me or Mark individually. And again, I heard that there was a meeting um with a kind of a three way meeting with with Jay and um Mark and Mimi that I thought was very productive, and I just look forward to hopefully building off of the um
Okay.
progress that we made at that meeting.
Maybe it's two separate issues. It it's it seems like the way of the issue with access to town council. And separately, in this one instance, there was some kind of select board interference with a matter that was in front of us. So we're, but we're really, if I'm not mistaken, the point is to rectify the communicate line of communication with Mr. Tallerman, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'd like to know if that's a a one off or if the select board always has such a heavy hand in town council, and if we weren't receiving responses because that was at the direction of the select board?
Um, no, I I'll just say that I'll just have to reiterate what I said before, just take each thing as a case by case basis. And if there's some situation where you feel like you would like a quicker response, to feel free to speak up to to Mark and me.
Well, maybe the fair thing then is just ask Mr. Tallerman for his input at this point, since we're really talking about the turn times on legal requests. I mean, you're, in this instance, it seems like you acted at the direction of the select board, so that's not really.
Well, I I again, Jay Tallerman, so a couple of things. Let me just start by saying, I I don't think the select board has posted for this discussion. So I I and they're probably not prepared for it. So I don't think they have an agenda that includes this discussion item. So.
I'm not sure. What's on the agenda, Andrew?
I think it just is joint meeting with um with planning board. But again, the the item that really drew us here was the uh joint discussion regarding the MBTA communities. And then what, are you having a representative, was it Chappa that's coming or?
No, no Chappa tonight.
But let me, let me see if I can get to some of the meat of this. So first of all, I I was really thankful um uh for the conversation with Mimi and Karina and Mark. I thought I thought it was great. Um, I thought we cleared up some of the pathways where we can do a better job, me personally, about getting to some things. Uh, some of the more recent vintage items that where there probably wasn't the reaction time that that perhaps the planning board wanted uh related to some items where the select board had a vested interest, you know, as town council were retained and hired uh by the town, by and through the select board. So I take my views by and through the select board. Um, so there were some items where both boards had a vested interest. So there was probably a little bit of concern over lack of response time over that. Other, for other items, some of that was on me for not responding as expediently as I could to Karina's request. The way it works here is essentially the same way it works in ninety percent of all towns. And that is that access to town council is generally controlled. It's not the select board through the town administrator or town manager. That's how it has to be for there to be efficient use and and expedient and cost effective use of council services. That's almost universal town after town. If there's ongoing matters where I am uh given authority by the town administrator and I'm really not aware of any more than a handful in my entire tenure here in Southborough where uh Mr. Purple has denied access. Um, so where I am given access, then that's continuing for any particular matter. So if you had a lengthy hearing or application before you or a piece of litigation um or some kind of other project like the one you all just discussed, that would be throughout the matter. So it wouldn't be have to ask repeatedly for it. And that's how it works. Our our fee structure is such that it's, there's no uh extra charge for repeated access. So when there is a particular project and we're given the green light to assist the planning board, then then that's what it is. So from a process standpoint, I think we've made some really good um progress. And on the particular issue that I think Mimi mentioned, I'm not, if it's the one I'm thinking of, I think it was more a matter of miscommunication than anything else, but I think we nipped it in the bud pretty quick. If I'm guessing that it's the same project that was referenced where I suggested that I was already on schedule to assist the the planning board in that, and we had the issue well in hand. If it's the one I'm thinking of, um, Mimi, because Karina and I had had multiple conversations by email um and phone about it, and I had actually communicated with the applicant's counsel and 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 a on a couple parts of it. So I think whether there was miscommunication or just trying to having a member of the select board reinforce or if it's, I don't know, but I thought it was more or less disposed of. That said, there are some times where the select board will either take a position on a matter and want me to reinforce that. And in most cases, I would think it would be not adverse to the interests of the planning board so that I could both serve the interests of the select board and emphasizing their position as well as serve the interests of the planning board without conflict. There are maybe matters occasionally where the select board is at uh has a divergence of opinion with the planning board, and then the select on a particular matter. And in that instance, a couple of things are possible. Either I'm not asked to represent the select board's position and I'm given permission to represent the the planning board's position without reservation, or potentially the select board would say we have a different of difference of um opinion and we want you to represent our position before the planning board. In that instance, if the planning board felt that they needed counsel for themselves and I couldn't serve the dual purpose, of course, the planning board could ask for special counsel uh of the select board. The select board could make a decision to allow that or not allow that. We haven't been faced with that um where that's had had to come uh to pass necessarily. I remember a couple of issues in and around Saint Marks and otherwise, but where I think we were able to get questions answered. But that's generally the process we follow. That's the same process. Everything I just described is almost word for word the same way every town does it.
So is it possible for us to come out of this meeting tonight with like some sort of you know, service level agreement or some equivalent of uh a realistic expectation on turn time between the time.
No, I think we resolved that with when I had that conversation with Mimi and and Karina where I pledged to do, um, you know, in my office pledged to do a better job on 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 a return time on on requests. So that's that's what we were trying to do going forward.
Ms. Pullahan?
Um, just my only question is, what does better mean? That's a qualitative metric. And is there quantitative metrics or what expectations are? Like, what is a good turnaround time? I know for my business, within twenty four hours, at least a response. I don't know what your business is and what that, um, I know what your business is, but I don't know what your protocols are when you're dealing with towns. But I think, is there a quantitative measure that you provide?
We we try and at least touch base within uh have an immediate response to give our, and that's our pledge on whether or not we can answer the question yes or no in an immediate sense. Sometimes it requires a little bit more information or research or something else where we we can't, but what we try and do is give an expectation. Very often, if a request comes in, I will ask when the the client needs it. If it's three or four weeks out of between hearings, then perhaps it might not be uh an immediate need. We cover all the interests, municipal legal interest for the town. So sometimes we can, we can get quite busy. So we try, I try and work that out with Karina or Mimi when those issues come up and try and get an expectation. But the expectation may would be at least to make re- return that con- request for contact immediately. It should be, should be what we um do. That's what our pledge is to you. If we can't give a response immediately, we'll certainly let you know. And most issues, a lot of issues can be resolved with a quick yes or no, but sometimes it does require a little more work than that.
Fair enough. And then specific to the other question, I do think we should maybe call a separate agenda topic so we can specifically talk about in those times a special counsel. Um, uh, Mr. Tallaman, not in your tenure here, but in our previous, um, our planning board did need special counsel and select board denied that. And I I think that was a very controversial case called Park Central, and I think that we never want to see again. So I think we should probably have a conversation with select board around um, how do we face when those things happen? Obviously not today since it's not on the discussion. Thank you.
Good idea. Mr. Murray?
I I just wondering about the process through the town administrator. Um, because I appreciate that you're busy, Mr. Towerman, and I see some of the notes going back and forth, and um, sometimes we get the correspondence and I um I can just appreciate appreciate how everybody busy everybody is, but some of our stuff is really timely. And I wonder if there's any sort of prioritization when it goes through um town administrator. I also thought that when your firm came to interview um with the select board, that um there was a kind of a notion that if you were too busy personally, that we would have access to others in your firm.
Which is true.
Yeah.
We have other attorneys, several other attorneys who do work in town and.
Yeah, and maybe if you're too busy, and I understand because you're 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 serving several towns. I mean, at what point can um you know, how does that work actually? Do, does everything go through you when you say, okay, I'm too busy, I want to point this person?
To have a a single point of contact so you know what's going on. So uh, one of my attorneys um or partners, uh, Brian Winter has done a significant amount of work here in town. We have some attorneys that work on public records, ethics issues, different attorneys. Uh, one of my other partners, Kate Federoff, handles a lot of uh records issues as well as all the labor items. So we we have had a number of other attorneys, you know, we we don't like to throw an army of different faces. We do like some consistency in contact. So wherever possible, especially on the land use side and the town meeting side, um, we like it to be that single point. Sometimes it's not possible. There was one somewhat recently for this board where I tried to get coverage through Brian Winter, who's a very capable land use attorney, and he was conflicted time wise as well. But if I can't do it, then we try and identify someone soon. Obviously, we just came out of a very busy season, which was town meeting. So things ease up a little bit, but um that's just part of it. And I can't answer the question that was posed earlier with respect to um Mr. Purple and his process and how he goes through it. That's uh up to his discretion as to how he makes decisions on access to counsel. And you know, we we have a great working relationship with Mark, who is a really excellent town administrator. And so um I'm sure he gives each uh requests careful consideration.
Well, I guess maybe that, thank you for that. Actually, that's a very thoughtful answer, and I appreciate that. Well, that would be my other um question. It's really more for the select board is how does Mr. Purple make decisions? Um, I've seen some requests from Karina, for example, just request after request after request. We're not even sure if you, um, Mr. Towerman gets, you know, those emails. Um, I think they might be stuck with town administrator. So I would um ask the select board if we could have a little more Um, I think they might be stuck with town administrator. So I would um ask the select board if we could have a little more transparency. Um, you know, most of, most of this is timely. I I believe that we've had some matters that we've had to delay because we didn't have uh counsel. And I don't think that's fair to the proponents. And um, I think that we should try to do a better job and there should be a little bit more transparency with what's going on with um with with Mr. Purple and how he does make decisions. I frankly wasn't aware that he um can make the decision. I I really thought that he was more like the transmittal in tracking. I totally understand that there needs to be one uh one person and tracking and otherwise it can get unruly. Um, but when the request is made, I think that it should be tracked and I I'm not aware that the town administrator can flat out deny a request. So I would think that anytime that we request for counsel, we're we're going to get it unless the select board come back and tell us. So if there's a different process, um, I think I'd I'd prefer to know that. Maybe we can speak about that another another.
I don't think we've ever been denied. If we haven't.
Just delayed.
No, on occasion, there's been a delay. I usually then call and then Mark finds email and then it makes it happen. So I have a backup system that if the email isn't responded to a certain amount of time. I nag.
Okay, I don't, I do want to mention there was one matter that went from April to May.
Yes.
And it was quite long and you know, I think that county minister was copied on all of those emails.
Yeah, and I think under that instance and and um Jay and I have spoken about this also, and I think Mimi was there that then one instance where you hadn't seen the email in your barrage of emails, Jay. And when we had town council hours here and I met with you, you hadn't actually seen it and it had been like a month or something and you said, oh, and then you found it. And then we tried to address it and we followed up. But yeah, there were instances where there were some lengthy lengthy um returns, but I believe the process that I take, just to clarify, is that when the planning board directs me um to get a legal opinion, I formulate an email which used to be done through a form. And now it's more of an open email, but I use the same form and I explain everything. I attach everything I can. I provide it to Mark Purple with a copy to Jay in the same email. Mark then will respond um hopefully within a day to say this um request is approved. And then it goes into um Jay's realm and then we wait for an opinion and um sometimes they're fast, sometimes they're slow. Um, I would just like to hope that maybe some of the responses um kind of in layman's terms and usually they are, but it's a little bit tough to interpret sometimes. So then we have to do a follow up because we have trouble saying, did you mean this or did you mean that? So if you could just be a little more, um, it would be really helpful if you just maybe elaborate a little more. I mean, I know I'm a book writer and you have a lot of emails to answer and you have shorter answers because you know what's in your head and the response. But I can't, we can't always interpret the shorter answer without a little bit more backups. There, that's why you might be getting like three or four follow ups, like, do you mean this or do you mean that? So that would be helpful.
Right. And sometimes I've had to ask questions because the the facts presented aren't aren't entirely clear either and and need clarification. Look, we can, we're always you know, not every, every board, every town planner is created um the the same way and some like things worded a certain way. So others like it a different way and you have to just get into a groove and you know, that's we're always trying to make sure that our the type and level and depth of our correspondence matches with the particular board that we're giving advice to. So it's always just finding the right groove. So we get there.
Yeah. And if, could I ask one question? Debbie, are you done? So this is kind of a bird's eye view question. And you know, I hear things as a town planner like um uh one elected board cannot affect another elected board. You you can't tell an elected board what one elected board can't tell another elected board. So how does that role, how does that?
Tell another elected board what?
What to do?
They can, they can make recommend dates.
Right, but they can't dictate.
No, they can't direct, they couldn't direct an appointed board what to do.
Right.
So they could, they could choose not to give resources to a particular board because some elected boards, the select board in particular, but others have resources at their availability. So they have some controls over the power of the person, access to other municipal resources like town council, but the select board can't, and I don't think they ever have per se directed and nor could they direct either your board or an appointed board. Um, uh, what to do in any particular instance, they could certainly advocate for their position in the strongest possible sense. And that's why they're elected as well, but they they can't order you to take a particular action.
No, and I'm not saying anybody has. I'm saying in the big picture, when you work under that idea, you know, that concept, um when the select board you know, goes through town, it goes through town administrator to you. And then the select board makes decisions about, you said before, what can and cannot pass. Um, or uh what the planning board can ask for or something like that. And I'm wondering if that's in conflict with that requirement that
I don't follow what you're asking.
Yeah, it's kind of, I'll ask it after in a separate time. It was more of a bird's eye view. Like if you can't, one board can't tell another one what to do, then how do you manage? How is it, is it in conflict when one board says to you do this, do that, and where you cannot provide that? And then the other board doesn't get that service?
I get your gist. If 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 you requested an opinion and the select board had a contrary view of if I knew where the board was coming from, or if the select board had a view at all that they wanted me to take as their advocate, I would, I would disclose that. So there are instances where if I've been directed to be an advocate for a specific issue and the another board that had access to counsel wanted advice on that same subject, I would be forthright with it. Not every slight difference of opinion means means there's a conflict, but in the event of a conflict where my appointing authority was taking a position and asking me to advocate for it, I'd I'd be duty bound to disclose that.
Yeah, that answers part of it. Thank you.
So could the select board ask you to advocate for something that's not under their jurisdiction and is solely under the jurisdiction of the planning board?
Of course. Yes. I mean, as the chief executives of the town, if, for example, there was a zoning bylaw or a particular um zoning application that they wanted to take a position on, because even though I mean zoning bylaws, they obviously have some jurisdiction over, but let's say something, a special permit for a shopping mall. Something came up that was under your jurisdiction and they have no permitting authority under it. As the chief executives of the town who take an interest in development issues in general, if not directly, they certainly have the authority to advance a position on that, the same way anyone else in this town has the authority to advance a position. And if they wanted to use me as the voice for that position, they have every right to do so. That doesn't make it a conflict. It just makes it something that I'm being asked to advance and advocate for.
But then, so then the elected planning board has no access to counsel unless we request special counsel.
Again, not necessarily. It depends if there's a conflict in position. If, for example, and we'll give the zoning bylaw uh and a um uh as an example, that the the planning board promoted and advanced a particular zoning bylaw and the select board was dead set against it. And they asked me to advocate for the reasons why, then I could not represent your position. Just couldn't, because that wouldn't be fair. I would be sent to you for that particular reason, so I wouldn't advocate for it. So you know, that's um it it comes up more frequently when there's litigation between two boards. Sometimes zoning boards and planning boards, for example, get involved in litigation against each other. I think we know that to be true. So in which case, sometimes I'll be asked to, I would be asked to represent one or the other. Even in and around the Park Central thing, I was hired as special counsel just before I became town council, because some individual members of boards needed counsel on that. And occasionally I was asked a couple other issues in around Park Central to come in as special counsel. But a board, the select board also is never required to give a another board special counsel. So it's at their discretion and that's law. That's not just local province. That's the status of law in Massachusetts.
Thank you. Ms. Brashow?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Jay. Um, just a quick comment. I I don't want to rehash everything that everyone's has already spoken about, but I think this conversation tonight is really important and I think we need to continue to improve the lines of communications between the select board and um you know, the planning board. And again, I'm I'm encouraged by this discussion tonight. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything else from select board?
Um. So this is Andrew. Um, for for me, no, again, I'm happy to some individual case, if there's some individual thorny issue that comes up. Um, I'm happy to um try to improve lines of communication and you all have my number and uh can reach out to me individually and um feel free to, for real future contact me if you think I can give help.
Thank you. Go ahead, Karina.
I have one more quick question and I want to try and stay kind of bland. Um, so planning board wants a discussion to happen in front of their board during the public hearing process. Uh, and the applicant is asked or has suggested themselves they would like their attorney present. And the planning board would like town council to be present so that the discussion can happen in front of the planning board during public hearing. Um, that's not, that's appropriate.
So it it's certainly not inappropriate. It, I think the, again, access to counsel and availability for you know, attendance in person or in Zoom is would probably be on a case by case basis, so of course, but um but the the fact that another party has an attorney isn't necessarily um, doesn't necessarily make it automatic that you get counsel to offer a contrary opinion or get counsel to appear.
No, but the understanding should be that if the planning board wants a discussion in front of the planning board, that should be the avenue.
Again, that that that's probably a case by
That was
basis. It certainly could be a request to Mr. Purple and then there would be an assessment as to whether or not, um, you know, we we, under our agreement with the town, we agree to come to a certain number of meetings a month. Sometimes it exceeds that and we don't charge extra. If there's an excess amount of those requests over a period of years, then I think the town could expect that the following year we might ask for more money. So there is, there is a somewhat of a cost to these things that we have to be mindful of. No one in Southsboro has ever abused that. So I don't think there's any hard and fast position as to whether or not it would be counsel present or not present would be available. I think if it if the situation warranted having counsel actually present, then I'm sure Mr. Purple would consider that request strongly. If it's doesn't, if it's not a necessary to have counsel present in a particular matter, then he might consider that as well. Again, he's got a he has to control and balance the access to count town council with the other boards that require attention from town council as well and town officials. So it's a case by case basis, Karina.
Mm hmm. But that conversation, if it was requested, should happen in front of the board as opposed to any other means. In other words, the conversation shouldn't happen. If that was the request of the board, it shouldn't happen outside the meeting. It should, best effort should be here at the meeting.
I'd leave that to the board, how your board, how they want to make requests for things. I certainly Karina, how how you and the board want to, sometimes applications come in and I think it's fair for you even before the board touches it. If you need a clarification for you to request that, sometimes your conversations with a board chair may result in a request to go to town council even before the board hears it because there could be a vital administrative or or legal issue that would be faced by the board before they have a chance to vote.
And sometimes I just call you or contact you because it's a quick question. Yeah.
Get a really tough application in and you think you make the judgment, perhaps in consultation with the chair, that boy, there's going to be an army of lawyers and engineers in that room. I think we'd like counsel. I don't think you I don't interpret the open meeting law or anything to require you to wait until the second session of that hearing after the board gets a chance to meet to bring in counsel. I think that's a judgment that you perhaps in consultation with the chair can make in making a request for to mark so that you know you'll have representation throughout a hearing rather than um, you know, halfway through or midway through.
But just to be clear, usually when um town council is asked to be present, it's because I'm directed at, you know, at an actual meeting, it's because the planning board directs that avenue. All the other things are
Sure.
smaller.
Uh, wha- whatever the request is, then that's a discussion that that Mark has. And sometimes he'll ask me, you know, what, what do you think about this? How do we go about it? Not these particular requests, but any particular request before he um sets me loose a little bit to to give, give the advice. So those are discussions I have with Mark and, you know, who has access to the degree of which council services are offered to town officials and boards.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on. Thank you, Mr. Dennington and select board members. I really appreciate the open conversation. I think it's very helpful.
Thanks. Um, so shall we adjourn then? Okay, so now I can, I can hear Mr. Stivers way in the background, even though I'm about twenty eight miles.
It's Mr. Hamilton, but
Oh, okay.
Stivers, Hamilton, it's all the same.
There is a motion and a second. Um.
That was Mr. Stivers.
Okay, so Mr. Stivers seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh first, um, all those in favor, Dennington, I uh, Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Stivers? And uh, Ms. Landry? She there? Okay, and uh, Ms. Cook is absent, so that um four nothing, uh, we are adjourned at seven fifty eight P M.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, onto the Dover workshop. So Jay, do you want to present something or do you want to just answer questions or?
I don't have a formal presentation. I'm happy to give a general overview or I'm happy to the the quicker we get into conversational and question and answer, I think the better. I mean, I could sit here, I've litigated and presided over hundreds of Dover cases. It's a particular specialty of the firm, so I I mean, I could sit here and talk about Dover amendment. I'm in the middle of drafting a huge Dover amendment brief right now. If you want me to talk about it, I'll just talk till I'm blue in the face and then some, or we can uh um, Marnie saying, don't do that. So, but I'm also happy to just uh answer questions on the the scope of your review or however you want to do it. Um, Mimi is is fine with me.
Answer questions, Mr. Stein?
So uh you know, I think I've been on this thing for like ten years. And um I always feel a little um vexed.
Should be.
When well, specifically.
Oh, right. I mean, the Dover amendment is vexing.
Um. I don't feel um you know, as a planning board member, like it's always necessary to go there, if you will. Um. I feel like this board, in my experience, has been very reasonable. Um, so you know, I I don't, I don't feel like we've been um you know, onerous to work with in our requests or um you know, I think that this board's always been willing to seek compromise and and for the most part, anyway, when a proponent is acting in good faith, so um I guess my question is like, because I read through what you sent. And um it's the first time I actually ever tried to read word for word the Dover amendment. And I found it challenging.
Um, she'd read the cases now.
Well, that's what you're yeah, that was why you. So uh can you, can you, I guess, like Can you, can you, I guess, like, just. The specific thing and why this board, I think, has the end tonight to talk about this. Is what's an educational institution? And under what circumstances is it appropriate or necessary to invoke the Dover Amendment? Just in that narrow, because obviously Dover Amendment is a vast thing. We really want to just, I think, hone in on those two key points.
So the, the second part of it, I, I'm not sure I follow the question. People are going to invoke the Dover Amendment. Whenever they can and will. You know, to serve their interests because of the enormous power that they have under the Dover Amendment. When compared to a conventional project that doesn't get the benefits of the Dover Amendment. So if we're, whether we're talking. An educational use, which is the broadest topic, or an agricultural, or childcare, or religious. Or a solar use, then i- if it suits the particular applicant. They'd be nuts not to employ it to their advantage. Very often they'll just have it in the background, knowing that they can still work with the board in good faith, even if they don't. Apply it and, and that works particularly well. In towns where, such as your town, where there's a major educational institution in the community. We. Represent a number of towns that have colleges. And other educational, large institutional, educational. Organizations and the relationship you try and make it as conventional as possible, but the Dover Amendment's always. Lurking a, a little bit behind the scenes. And where you have a good applicant who's willing to work and compromise, you barely have to reference it. What is educational, though? I mean, there's the classic educational, which is obviously any specific non-educ, nonprofit. Or public school, college, anything like that, the classics. And then there's everything else. And by everything else, I really mean following the McLean decision, everything else that even touches. On education in any, in any way. The one that is most frequently the subject of dispute and acrimony are group homes. That, that crop up in towns and the, the courts have universally held and continued to expand. What they will consider to be educational in that kind of housing context. To the extent of which, after the McLean case, which was a case that I tried in land court and won. And then lost at the Supreme Judicial Court because they expanded educational use just one more time. And they've continued to do that over the years, so it could be just about anything.
So what, what in that, what in the Dover Amendment is the silver bullet? At the disposal of the educational institution? Because I read through it and I couldn't really pinpoint.
It's, it's the word educational.
Well, but right, right. Sorry, but is, what paragraph or like, if you're representing a school. And, and you have to point to the Dover Amendment, can you just, for my.
Scroll, scroll back down to the top, whoever's got that. Second paragraph, go to the second paragraph, scroll a little bit. Keep going, after agriculture. Keep going, agriculture is on, there you go. Right there, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict. Interior area of a single-family residential building, nor shall any such ordinance or bylaw prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures. For religious purposes or for educational purposes on land owned or leased. By the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions, or bodies politic, or by a religious sect. Or denomination, or by a nonprofit educational corporation.
So we can't, if we follow this, we can't restrict the buildings of a school?
Not, no, the, the, the next part of that is the reasonable regulation component of it.
The reasonable regulation?
Yes, with respect to the few items that are listed there with respect to. Yard sizes, lot areas, setback, open space, parking and building coverage requirements.
What about like use? Uses.
You could determine that in your view, to the extent that the Planning Board had jurisdiction of that question. Normally comes up, but in the building department or in the zoning board, but to the extent it came up in the Planning Board. Because someone applied, say, for site plan approval stating that they were an exempt Dover use. And you disagreed that they were educational, you could disagree that they're educational. If there's even a scintilla, a whiff. A tiny component of education, either in the formal or the informal sense, you're likely to lose.
In an appeal?
In an appeal.
Okay.
It's just that the track record is abysmal. And they keep expanding what they are willing to consider to be educational.
So we as a board sort of have to weigh the risks and the benefits of trying to restrict. Educational institutions.
Well, restrict, I don't know.
Or, or, not restrict, I misspoke.
Regulate.
Within our normal jurisdiction duties.
Let me give you an example of, of how this could play out in real time with the case I'm dealing with right now. It's not educational, it's a childcare facility. Essentially the same principles apply. Went to site plan review in the town of Needham, where I'm special counsel to the Planning Board there. And they said right out of the gate, this is a legitimate childcare facility. We're not going to say no. But we want substantial changes to this site plan. So they approved it. As, as proposed, but wanted it moved around on the site and wanted some additional limits. And restrictions on it, but they moved the building to an entirely new location on the site. And the developer didn't like that. And that's what we're litigating. So you have the authority to shape. Significantly shape or reduce even, provided that what you're doing is, doesn't result in. Under one calculation of the, the standard. Excessive cost of compliance without advancing a legitimate municipal purpose.
Okay, so.
And it's a two-part test. So if you do something and restrict something or condition something. That has Dover protection, even if you're regulating under any of those areas that I talked about. In a way that could be demonstrated by the applicant and it would be their burden to demonstrate. That it would render it too costly for them to proceed legitimately without advancing a legitimate. Zoning purpose. They would have to prove both of those things.
Okay.
And they would prevail. So on the other hand, you're just doing something that is just rearranging the deck chairs, so to speak. And it's not really much of a costing and you had a valid reason for doing it. To, and it could be pretty loose, just compatibility with the neighborhood, structural elements, et cetera. Then you might actually prevail. Again, there aren't a ton of cases where towns prevail. But there are, there are good examples of it.
Okay, so if the edu, if the institution can draw any, any, like you said, whiff of, or scintilla of educational use.
Then you're just in the reasonable regulation world.
Okay. All right, I think I got it. That helps a lot.
It's a tough spot to be in, but let's be clear. And I've said this to Karina before.
We're going to need legal opinions on a few things, by the way.
Having to preside over a Dover-protected use is tough sledding. That said, you're not without tools. There are, there are folks who will opine and you will see opinions out there that you, you have to say yes. Now, there are some things where you have to say yes. And it's more on the, for the building permit side. On when, for that kind of stuff. But there's always an opportunity, if it's legitimately before you under say a special permit or site plan review. To still do your job to help shape a better project, albeit only within those few areas of regulation that I referenced previously.
Ms. Willheim? Mr. Maria?
Well, I just want to thank you for this. I just wanted to ask you about the two-part test that you just mentioned for unreasonable regulation. So one is too costly to proceed, and what was the other one?
So it, it's either too costly or it's just like. It's a condition of approval that makes it impossible. So we don't even have to get in a cost. Like if you say, it can only be in this developable area and it's the size of a thimble, you know, then. But yes, too costly or impossible to proceed without advancing a legitimate municipal purpose under zoning.
So can you give me an example of, of, of a case, some case law around that?
Sure.
Because I'm sure it's been expanded in the courts, yeah.
It's all over the place in cases. What's unusual about the cases I've learned over the years. Is that the cases that come to maturity in the courts are rarely instances where there's a fair-minded debate between. Conditions of approval. And what the applicant originally applied for. Normally, the, the cases are litigated where there's either an outright denial. Or the imposition of conditions that render the project virtually impossible. Or so ca, so obviously costly. But I'll give you an example, again, it, it. It comes out of the childcare cases realm. Petrucci versus the town of Westwood, where someone wanted to convert a barn. To, for childcare purposes. And they had dimensional requirements that when you converted this barn into the, a different use. They would be out of compliance. So the developer of it, or the proponent of the. Childcare facility said, well, I get Dover Amendment, so I don't have to comply with that. And the board. Felt that, no, you do have to comply with that. So they. It was essentially a denial, but the issue was what would it cost? To comply with that and what were the benefits of compliance? So again, the two-part test. And what they found was that the cost to move the barn, if it were to comply with the dimensional requirements. Under zoning would have been essentially the same cost. Of it would, to renovate the building in the first place. So it was essentially double the cost. And the court said, well. You know, doubling the cost, it makes it excessive. And then they examined the municipal benefits. And they found, well, if you move it to comply, it's actually more in the face of the neighbors. And more of a hindrance. It's not really meeting your goals. There's no stated, it's not. Making it any better. This was just a denial for the sake of denial, in, in other words. So. In my situation, in, in the one I'm defending for the town of Needham, the main issue was. That a 10,000 square foot childcare facility was proposed right up next to the street, right on Central Ave. And the board said, great, we'd love childcare facility. We, we want you to move it 64 feet further back, or I forget the exact number. And otherwise you pretty much get what you want and here's a few other assorted conditions. So the question there is, hey, they gave them everything they want and this is kind of a novel issue. They got everything they want, except they wanted to slide back. We're having a debate as to is there a cost differential between having it closer to the street? And a few feet further back to fit in with the, the particular neighborhood, which is primarily residential with decent-sized setbacks. And what is that cost defer, differential and does it make the project? Hard to construct and still make a buck, in other words. So you can see how it shapes up, but more frequently that issue has never really reached. And there aren't that many cases on it because we're talking about more of a straight disagreement as to the project in the first place. There's a surprisingly small amount of case law, although there's some on that particular question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my second one, I have only two questions. So, under, under Dover, where we're talking about reasonable regulation. I wanted to ask you about, so which is yard size, lot area setback, open space, parking and building coverage requirements. I want to talk to you about parking. And so I've done a fair amount of looking at case law and trying to make my, my way through it. And for every case that I have found, which a lot of the times is, like you mentioned, the colleges, Radcliffe. Tufts.
Boston College.
Boston College. There, there are, for the size of the parking lot. Sometimes the school wants it larger and the town wants it smaller, I think. And sometimes the town wants it larger and the school wants it smaller. But in the case law, they always describe the number of students that would be served by the size of that lot.
The Tufts case had a, had an interesting discussion of that.
Yep. And I'm recently following Belmont School. Mainly because they were going to tear, you know, rip out a bunch of trees, I think, to, to make their project. But they gave an interesting chart where they started looking at parking spaces per student. And actually listed some of South Borough schools as well as, you know, schools all over Massachusetts. So. This idea about parking spaces per student, but I did see one of the. One of the cases discussed, you know. You know, my understanding of it is not just the student, but the student, the faculty, the people that work at the library, you know, et cetera. How many, how many? Spaces do they need? And there are always calculations of where are these spaces around the campus? You know, are they behind this new building? Are they associated with the library? Is it the library to be built? There are always calculations. So my question is around that. If you can help me understand. If there's case law that describes if parking is for anybody other than. Students or faculty or people working to advance the educational process, which I think is what they're trying to do at, at, you know, some of these colleges and. And universities. And others, not for the public, it's not for the town. In what I have found, it's really, the, the calculations are always for. You know, do the students need to drive to that parking lot in order to use the library? Do the faculty? Or even the cooks need to park here to cook food for the children to. And advance the educational process. I haven't seen anything. About the town or the people, the spectators, whatever. So I wanted to ask you, is there a case? That talks about the size of a parking lot that's commensurate with spectators, for example, that might. Show up and use it in the town.
Right, so the. The, the parking lot, the size of the parking lot and who's going to use it could be an interesting question if. If, assuming that the parking lot itself is accessory to something that is, which is agreed to be an educational use. Then un, unless that's, unless that's just a false narrative and it's really to be used for non-educational use. But assuming that the parking lot, at least in some significant portion, is going to be used to service the. Educational use, the courts won't examine whether or not as an ancillary matter, there might be some benefits enjoyed. By others in the, in the use, not strictly related. They're going, if they've already characterized and qualified. The underlying primary use is educational, they're not going to examine who may use that parking lot. The use of the parking lot and the size of the parking lot is more going to be a matter of science. And engineering, where someone is going to do an examination. Given the proposed use of it, where it is, who's going to use it? Is it large enough for the anticipated load? So no one is going to, i- it's not so much the educational use at that point, it's really just determining. Is this big enough to serve your particular purposes? If it's. Undoubtedly a school parking lot, but it may enjoy. Some benefits of serving other folks for meetings or sporting events or something else. Then the question isn't going to be whether or not it's educational, it's just going to be, is it big enough? Period. Are there enough spaces, given what you're anticipating it's going to be using for? And the regulation. That you're going to have over it isn't over so much over the use, because that's already a foregone conclusion. It's going to be, does your traffic engineer or the reasonable engineer reviewing parking? Feel that there's actually enough spaces there? And if there's not enough spaces, then the Tufts case is somewhat instructive where it says, okay. If there's not enough spaces, parking is going to dictate perhaps the bulk of your building overall. Because we have to have some limits on the size, or you'll limit the use by a way of condition as to. As to how that parking would be used, but I don't think it goes so much to the use question as to the actual parking. I don't think it goes so much to the use question as to the actual parking need question. And and tha- and that the answer that could vary, again, based upon. Individual circumstances, but I I view that more on the science side than I do on the, is it educational or not side?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, in this, in my hypothetical, I I think um, you know, the the school is educational. I thought there was a case of a um. A town that wanted to, or maybe the school, I'm not sure which, wanted to build like a parking garage. And uh the town felt it was too big. And so I was wondering if you know.
It was probably Boston College.
Oh, okay. And I don't really know that case, but might be interested to hear about it. But are there cases where the planning board? Wanted to limit, but let's say in that case of the parking garage, they said, no, that's not, doesn't fit with that. Part of town, it's not, you know, can they limit the size of that parking area?
So so I think the answer to that would be potentially, yes. And again, we would end up in. Let's say someone came to you, an educational, you have educational institutions in town, or a new one came to you, whether it's a classic school. Or some kind of other institution that qualified as educational. And they wanted to do a big. Parking lot or a parking garage or something, and you felt it was just too much pavement. Or be in a case of structural parking, you just didn't like the way it looked and you wanted it to be smaller, or in the example that I gave. Setback further from the street, which might affect its size. You're allowed to do that, provided that they could then make the argument, if you do that, we're toast. Because we would then have to reduce the size of our thing and it affects us financially. And it really nullifies the use we're trying to do. So we just get into the analysis if. You know, it's it's pulling a string a little bit. So if you change one thing, then it's going to affect the other thing. And that's the kind of ballgame you get into. Now hopefully. If it was a process like site plan review, it would be a legitimate discussion by in between. The board and the applicant and say like, this parking is just ugly. And it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. And we think it's too much and we don't like all this blacktop. I don't like that poured concrete. We do a better job here. We could live with maybe a little more cramped parking. And you live with a little bit more space and figure out some other way, maybe take the of the size of your other building down a little. Those are the kinds of discuss, that's why we have site plan approval. That's why there's a public process. To try and work those things out. And hopefully you narrow the gap. If you can. People are gonna have to make a calculation as to either what they can defend or what they can prosecute in terms of the particular piece of litigation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Just a comment, Jay. Thank you. And uh, thank you, Mimi and Planning Board for having Jay come in for this. I think it was a really beneficial discussion and um I certainly learned a lot from it. So thank you.
Is that it?
Um, I have a couple of questions. So, under Dover. Zoning, what what the planning board can regulate has to. Serve a legitimate municipal purpose.
Within those areas that we talked about, yeah. Which can be broad. You know, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, building. That that's for educational. It it's a little bit more nuanced in some other areas, but yeah.
So how how is open space defined?
I'll tell you, it's not. It it's not. It's not defined and there's no cases that have rev- to my knowledge, that have revolved around trying to create a condition on that. So I have a case right now, different case. Where one of the disputes is, well, are we talking about amounts of classic, you know, classic, how much open space are you doing on the lot? Or are we talking about components of the open space that exists on the lot, for example, landscaping? And landscaping, to me, it's could be a component of the open space. Landscaping could also be a component of setback. Or parking, if there's landscaping in and around parking. So you could see how it could touch a bunch of different areas. But I I'm not aware of any fully developed case law, certainly more than a passing reference or two in the cases. That has revolved around the issue of open space. Again, really the. The kind of um. Where the rubber hits the road in most of these cases are around either the bulk. Or setback issues or the go no-go issues as to whether or not it's. Overprotected or not. We have not seen, despite the fact that the the statute is. Barely old, a a case that has revolved solely around what is open space and what's not. I I certainly wouldn't mind taking an argument that a that the use of the open space is. Every bit as of um as important as the quantity of the open space. But I I can't sit here and tell you that I have a whole bunch of case law that's right on point on that either.
Yes, certainly, Southborough has a very specific definition of open space, but many. Other towns define open spaces landscaped open space, like landscaping is open space.
And I think your definition of it isn't necess- won't necessarily carry the day. It might be of some evidence or import or to form the basis of an argument. But, you know, it's not. There there's nothing in the like. There are some components of the zoning act and subdivision control that. Defer to the definition in a local bylaw. I don't think the Dover amendment. Use the the term open space. By reference to however the local town defines open space. That would be. Kind of a workaround, an invitation for a town to circumvent or workaround. I think they had something in mind when they decided open space was regulable. And I'm not aware of.
They didn't bother telling anyone what that was.
Okay, wel- welcome to the zoning act. It's, you know, it it's been difficult. There are hundreds and hundreds. Of Dover amendment cases that have been have been litigated. And there's no stop in it. I've I've litigated a whole bunch of religious ones, even a cemetery case out in. Central Mass that I I litigated for quite a while. That was. Remarkable to me that there was an allegation, I was on the the side of the cemetery, that there was an allegation that it wasn't even religious. I I literally had to litigate that issue before resolving it. I mean, the. How how um, you know, you think you've seen everything, right?
I think I think I remember that case, actually. Um, and my other question is. So the the burden is upon the proponent to prove that. Any regulation um or compliance of which would substantially diminish or to. Detract from what they're trying to do.
Correct, or and diminish or detract then has meaning within the cases, as I mentioned, with either. It completely makes it a nullity. Or it essentially makes it not worth it, or the results in excessive cost of compliance. So those are all along that kind of spectrum.
So what so what's required for a proponent to prove that? They, can they just say that?
So it depends a little bit. I don't want to get too deep into the cases, whether it's new construction or conversion or use of an existing. Structure. If it's new construction, the cost of compliance generally is going to be the the main issue there. If it's conversion of a structure, it might be more just kind of diminish the usefulness of it. And again, that's a reasonable person standard. But it it very often, in the way we've been seeing it lately, is going to come down to. Cost of compliance, because it's an, it's an, it's a way to measure these things.
But could I, can I just? That that's cost of compliance as far as. Instructing it. But what about during permitting? The cost of some requirement during permitting, is that? Accountable?
Right, I follow, but the the cost of some of getting from. Point A to point B is only one part of the pro forma.
No, but say, I understand, but say someone is required to provide certain calculations. And those calculations are done by an engineer and they cost X amount of dollars. In order to prove that um something is safe. Related to parking, right? So. If the, how do you, is is a cost of uh engineering fee? To accommodate a site plan part of that cost? Or is it really you're talking about constructability?
I'm gonna hesitate to give much of an answer, because I I think we're veering a little close to something that's the subject of a of a public hearing. Karina, but.
Yes, I agree.
That the question is a case by case. Basis, I would hesitate to suggest or to conclude. That even if it was a few thousand dollars, the cost of going through a permit process, which by law. The board has a right to charge certain costs. Could ever be cost prohibitive for uh any particular project. That will.
Whether it's an application.
You're talking about a prop in the bucket.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I I don't.
I was just trying to get the difference between.
I know.
Construction phase and the permitting phase. It doesn't matter where the cost is.
Well.
It may or may not.
It could.
It could.
It could matter.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get too deep in it, because I think it's a little too close to a. A real world example that you have.
Right.
Subject of a of an of a pending matter.
So just on that, a- a- as far as construction phase, um. Would it be under the planning board's jurisdiction on on a Dover amendment project, applicable project to? I guess it would depend on the size of it to. Request inspections during construction or as built. Or anything like that, anything that's in the normal list of items.
Spending hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, I can't imagine the cost of inspection. Actually tipping something over, but um but there's also a good and valid public safety benefit for it. Let's put it this way, if during the the any particular proceeding before the planning board where. You are suggesting in rounding into a potential decision that inca- contains conditions. That might have a cost element to them and an applicant says, that's just too darn costly, I can't do that. You could say, well, tell us why. Like, if you're saying that this, this is the tipping point for you. Um, from the fiscal feasibility on this, explain it to us. Tell us why. And you're you're entitled to that information. Someone, it's not self proving, you know, co- cost of construction is an art. Or expert witnesses who do only costs of construction. It's an art. And if someone is saying, oh, it's just, I just can't afford to do that. Well, you're gonna have to put a little more meat on that bone, is what I would say.
Well, it's hard to understand, only because.
You don't have to. You could be on the same page with someone, say, okay, I get, you know, I trust you, but. If the, if you were at loggerheads with someone over that issue, you could say, show me the receipt, so to speak.
So in our code, we have a list, right, under site plan. And as a process person, I'm always try to go. By the list, you know, and you, and it sounds to me like it's difficult to do that. Without the detailed context of the project, like if it says.
Not everything on the list is gonna be, is gonna be germane to Dover regulation either.
Right.
That your list is pretty exhaustive, and some of those things just simply aren't. Germane to Dover. So you might. If someone says, well, I don't know why I would give you that regarding a a traffic study. If it's not relating to parking and loading and unloading, because, and they're right. It's just not a Dover use, as much as we'd like it to be.
It's not cut and dry.
Have more of a a full boat of regulatory authority for Dover uses. That's just not what the statute has given us.
Thank you, I understand. I always want a really black and white answer. I just want to do it this way and be told this is how it's supposed to go. I understand, this is a much more gray.
It's a lot of.
Area. There's a lot of gray.
There's a lot of gray area.
I got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Lisa? Anyone? Else here have any questions in Zoom land?
Possibly seven attendees, no hands.
Thank you very much, Jay. That was very helpful.
Glad, and if there's follow up, then great, and we'll see you on the twenty seventh, I believe.
Should be fun.
It will be.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda. Oh, update accessory apartments, Debbie. So, quick update.
I'll just give you a very quick update. Yep, so um. Um, an idea about accessory apartments by right came up um about last year on the zoning board. And um has been kind of, I guess, percolating around um with the select board. And um just recently, um, three of us got together with um chairman of select board, Andrew Dennington. Uh, my Andrew, myself, and Doris Cahill, who are from zoning board, who originally brought up the idea. Of accessory um dwellings by right. Now, in um in town, we call them accessory apartments, so slightly. Different phrase. Um, and the idea about it is to take a look at how many accessory apartments. You know, do we have, how many have, um, you know, maybe over COVID, has there been more interest in it? At the zoning board, um for zoning board, um it's a special permit application. Um, and to see if it might be something that um the town would be interested to. Um, you know, entertain at a as a warrant article for for town meeting and mostly. Uh, most likely annual town meeting in the spring. Um, there's just a couple of things to that. Um, so. Uh, Mr. Dennington had uh been working with a ZBA, Laura Davis had. Taken a look at how many existing accessory apartments that we have since nineteen seventy nine. There are only twenty seven. Um, and uh Ms. Cahill mentioned that, you know, really hasn't been much kind of an uptick in the last couple of years. They've seen some. Interest, um but you know, we wonder whether or not the town would be interested in it. Um, especially since COVID, I can at least say I had neighbors who had an RV parked out at their parents. For three years, um an airstream actually parked. And, you know, if there was maybe accessory apartments or dwelling by right. Uh, maybe they would have built a tiny house or something like that. So we we sort of uh decided that we would get some information for. Um, Mr. Dennington and take a look at um. You know, our our zoning code, what's in there, the definition. Of uh ours is accessory apartments, not accessory dwelling, but how many um size? Uh, number allotted, how that relates to other parts of the zoning code with elderly. There's some inconsistencies in the code. That we found. And also just really take a look at other towns and see, you know, ha- what kind of um. You know, uh, if they if they have accessory uh dwelling units by right. Um, there, you know, just to mention that there there is a provision in the Housing Choice Act. Um, for accessory dwellings, if it were to pass, accessory dwelling units by right. Would pass. Um, but if we were to change any of the wording, um. Which we would really have to do because it's not consistent with our zoning code, then it's a two thirds majority and not a simple. Majority. So we entertain the idea, I'd say briefly, of just like knowing that it's there, but that this has nothing to do with um. Housing Choice Act. Um, this is really an investigation to see if the town. Or the select board would want to bring forward a warrant article for accessory apartments by right. And it to give um some information to um to look into it. So we formed, uh, you know, met once. And we have sort of a homework assignments to look at, you know, various different towns. And um we'll be meeting back up again in in July.
Mr. Stein.
Thanks, Debbie. I agree um and support the uh notion of a by right warrant article. Advancement. So thanks for your work on that.
Ms. Houlihan.
Thanks, Deb, uh, for the work. Yeah, I think the investigation would be interesting. I'm always curious, because I think there are a lot of accessory apartments that exist that we are not counting and the impact on. Either people's tax rates or whatever decisions that are being made to be able to do that. I just don't know um how open or available that information will be and how you acquire it. Um, but I would support a a by right support for accessory apartments. I think we've learned through. Um, everything what the MBTA community is trying to do is get people so that they can actually live in a place where they can afford.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Uh, I I also agree. I think it's definitely worth exploring. I'm certainly interested to hear as you come back with more information as well. And I could not agree with Ms. Houlihan more, that I think that uh that number is a lot higher as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Debbie. Um, I also agree. I think it's a good idea. And I think that if we. Limit the size, I think it's nine hundred square feet or something, and then it would be a simple majority instead of the two thirds uh vote at. Town meeting. So I think that we could, it could be crafted so that it's a simple majority. And I would just recommend keeping it as a accessory apartment, because the. Our definition is pretty much the same as an accessory dwelling unit, but then we would. but then we wouldn't have to go through the whole code trying to look for that term to change it, it's as we found from the downtown district, we're not great.
Then we could just make something in the definitions, address that.
Yeah, we think it may be, just be the definition, I mean, we talk about separate entrance, separate utilities, separate kitchen kind of thing, and it just needs to be clear, that it could mean a separate building, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's what our definition says now. For the apartment. Anyone else? In Zoom?
We have seven attendees, no hands.
Seven attendees, no hands raised.
Great, thank you Debbie. Appreciate your work, Andrew and uh, Doris is, and look forward to hearing back on this one, public hearing. Uh, forty forty-two Central Street. I believe we're just continuing this?
Yes, we received an extension request from Michael Weishen um, to the June twenty-seventh planning board meeting to continue the public hearing with action by the planning board to July fourteenth, I believe. With uh, no, continue with no testimony.
So moved?
Second. I have a motion in the second, any discussion, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Do we want to change the time, I just want to ask that? We have that at seven um, seven oh five.
Moved with the uh, change of time to seven oh five.
Well, that's where it is currently, so do you want to make it sooner?
I'm sorry, seven.
We started six thirty.
We started six thirty.
We, we used that half an hour for administrative matters, I think that, that's what we discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we have him at seven.
Yes, this meeting was particularly moved from our typical Monday, the twenty-sixth to the twenty-seventh, especially uh, for the reason that both town council and the applicant's council can be here. At um, seven or seven oh five, it's, it's
Yeah, so, yeah, let's just keep.
So whatever it says in there is good if you're in agreement with.
Sorry, seven PM is what's on the form, so.
Is that good?
Yep.
That's good.
We had our discussion, is there any more? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Brashio abstained.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, two oh six Turnpike Roads, um, minor site plan approval. Karina, you want to update us?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Continued?
Getting to my notes. Okay, um, we've had a couple of public hearings, I'm not public, we have a couple of meetings um, that were continued without testimony, um, and then um, on June second, uh, we received mission number four from Hancock Associates represented here by Dan Ramirez, right?
Romero.
Romero, sorry. I can't remember all the names anymore, um, and that was distributed to the planning board for review, um, and it addressed the comments, I believe, that the planning board had at the prior meeting. Uh, one in particular was um, to call out the trees that are to be, to remain, the existing trees. Um, not only the ones identified on the plan, but also identified on the plan and used to service the landscaping requirement.
Yeah, and the areas away from the work, over toward the restriping of the parking lot.
To meet the landscaping, um, parking related requirements, okay, uh, so we did receive an extension request um, for the minor site plan to this evening. Um, I had drafted a decision and um, supplied it to the applicant and um, uh, to Hancock Associates for review, uh, let's see. Uh, we received comments back from the building department, um, that they have no issues with the proposed parking. Uh, let's see what else is here. Um, then in the interim, um, I had um, had, had the understanding that we probably should ask for as built, but then I thought, well, this is minor site plan, and there isn't a term, you're not moving the building, et cetera. Um, it's very minor work to the rear, so I had spoken with the chair um, to discuss a potential, you know, after construction, there would be a um, a site visit.
Inspection.
Yeah, site inspection by our town consultant, Fussin O'Neil, um, to just review to see if the, and report back um, to make sure everything was in compliance uh, in lieu of as built, uh, so that was a uh, uh, condition I added, in addition to the calling out the trees to be um, retained there. Um, so I sent that to the planning board earlier um, today. Um, and it's highlighted in there, um. So uh, generally, the decision identifies the project, um, the plans that are, Dan is going to quickly present the changes that he made, if there was anything else, those become the final approved plans. Um, I just want to point out that in the decision, we do say that a class two auto dealer license is required from the select board for the parking spaces intend- intended to be exclusively used for the car sales.
Yes, understood.
Okay, because I know in the past has been confusion about who dictated what was used for car sales and et cetera, so we want to make that clear. You still have to get a, a license for that.
Yep, and the client understands that too.
Okay, good, and I know the whole purpose, part of the purpose of the, this whole plan was to find spaces to use and still meet the use parking for the build.
And define the number of spaces on a document that's on file, yeah, can be referenced, yeah.
Super, uh, so we have three conditions, and one is that the existing trees and existing required shade trees per zoning by law one seventy-four thirteen E two to be protected and retained as identified on the approved uh, plans, then there's a second condition, um, simply stating that planning board, um, the applicant shall pay all fees, the town is self-imposed generally for construction projects and for the purposes of monitoring compliance of construction and occupancy of the project in accordance with the site plan approval, so um, I spoke to the building commissioner this afternoon, and we kind of discussed what kind of, there is no certificate of occupancy going to be required because you're not doing any rehab of the interior of the building.
No.
Right, you're just using the building as is, the interior.
Yes, from my understanding, yes.
So if you were to get a building permit and you do modify things, then there would be a, a new certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
But you're just moving in, or you're, you're owner, the owner's just moving in to do this car sales and that use there.
Yeah, they're using the existing office space in there.
Yeah, um, so when I did the third condition here that says the town, um, the owner and applicant shall notify the town planner upon substantial completion of the site work. After uh, construction is completed, the town's engineering consultant shall perform a site inspection with report to the planning board to determine satisfactory completion of all elements and conditions of the approved plans. And the reason I talk about the certificate of occupancy is because the last section of site plan code ties compliance to certificate of occupancy, and since that is not the case here, we have to tie it to something, so um, uh, when Fussin O'Neil does the site review, they'll provide a report and let us know if there's anything that's not compliant with the site plan. And then the planning board, any issues of noncompliance shall be addressed by the owner applicant within six months and is acceptable to the planning board, um, so that may require, so if everything's in order and everything is great, that's good, but if there's issues, then it may require a second inspection by Fussin O'Neil to ascertain that those issues were resolved.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that's crystal clear, and the timeframe was added there because we don't have um, a certificate of occupancy to tie it to. All right, so basically, it's just, the planning board has the right to ask the, that condition that says, you know, you have, the owner has to pay for that review, and that, that review is going to happen.
Understood.
At the end of construction, that you just have to let us know when it's done.
Okay.
Okay, just want that on the record.
Yep, and um, I can go over, so just briefly, just over the overall project again, just to kind of uh, hash it out again, I mean, uh, I know I've gone through the details, but uh, in general, we're converting this first fifteen hundred square feet um, uh, of office space into uh, retail for auto sales, and uh, we're also bringing the parking lot into compliance with zoning by repainting the, the striping and things of that nature, and then uh, also getting rid of this portion of pavement and bringing in stormwater infrastructure to uh, remediate for that unpermitted pavement that was done over here. Um, and that's, that's, those are the main components of the project, so um, the changes, the only change since the last version of this plan was adding uh, to protect and retain to all these uh, required existing trees uh, over in the area away from the work, uh, but there is striping going on over there too, so now, that's the only change from the last version of the plans.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein?
So does the condition require the um, I guess my, my question is how does the condition hold the um, proponent accountable to any findings by the, by Fussin O'Neil, by the consultant and a post inspection post uh, approval?
So the last two sentences, any issues of noncompliance shall be addressed by the owner.
So the condition, the last two sentences say, any issues of noncompliance shall be addressed by the owner and applicant within six month and as acceptable to the planning board. A follow-up site inspection may be required to confirm issues were addressed.
Okay, no questions, good job, thanks a lot.
Ms. Houlihan?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Maria?
Just a quick question, you mentioned some of the pavements going to be removed?
Yes, only in this area, the, that's within the buffer zone, yep. There'll be a new um, Cape Cod uh, berm here. And uh, one more, one new uh, drainage structure, double catch basin to capture this runoff that's created by this uh, unpermitted pavement.
And have you been to the conservation commission, can't remember?
Um, yes.
Yes, I didn't recall, okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, thanks for coming in, I think we've only seen you on, on video so far, right?
Oh, really, oh, I came in one, one, the first, maybe like two months ago, but
Oh, okay, thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Brashio?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you for putting those uh, clarifications on the plan.
Glad to help.
I'm very persnickety about trees.
Yes, understandably, yeah, all right, thank you.
So do you want to, uh?
So uh, make a motion, uh, the, the board approved two oh six Turnpike Road change of use, minor site plan as submitted, presented.
Second.
With conditions.
Second. I have a motion in the second, any discussion, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Very good, congratulations, thank you very much.
So Dan, just so you know, I'll finalize this decision, and then I will file it with the town clerk. All right, and then there is an appeal period. Yes, I'll send you a copy, and I think we'll use the plans you submitted as the two sets of approved plans that will have the planning board endorse, all right, and then I'll let you know, and then you can pick them up. All right. Yeah, thank you for your diligence, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is an A and R one thirty Main Street. Thank you very much for your patience.
I ran over some dinner. So I believe you have the plans in front of you.
We do.
So the current property at one thirty Main Street, Jennifer Thompson is approximately four hundred and forty-eight feet of frontage on Main Street. And we are looking to create lot number two on the plan as you're looking at the existing dwelling to the left with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and a total area of one point nine acres.
Do you have anything else on that, Karina?
Sure, um, yep, we received this A and R for one thirty Main Street, um, from um, Drew Connorstone, engineers who provided the work, um, we had a couple of revisions that they had to make, and they accommodated those. Um, we checked um, thoroughly the rest of the plan, uh, and everything appears to be in order. Uh, it's basically taking one lot and splitting it into two, they meet the frontage requirement, and a circle also passes through lot two as required for the zone, um, so I think it's in good order.
Mr. Stein?
No questions?
Ms. Houlihan?
No questions.
Ms. De Maria?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Brashio?
No questions.
And I have no questions, thank you very much, I see we have the required hundred and fifty feet of frontage, which is what we look at for an A and R, so thank you very much. And again, thank you for your patience. So uh
Yep, so a motion to endorse the uh, A and R for one thirty Main Street as submitted and presented.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Maria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, six to eight Turnpike Road as built review.
Uh, so um, I'll give you a quick update, and um, Peter Bemis is here with Engineering Design Consultants who provided the um, design during um, the modification to major site plan approval for six to eight Turnpike, if you recall, um, this was a site that um, had a detention basin um, to the east side of the uh, property, and um, the uh, owner through Peter Bemis came in and proposed an underground detention system, um, in order to um, expand their parking area, um. So, uh, the project was constructed and um, as built were provided, Fussin O'Neil then uh, provided a review of the as-built, um, in which they had uh, several comments, uh, Peter Bemis then provided a response to those review comments, and then um, today we received a follow-up review, uh, with the remaining items to the discretion of the planning board, um, so Peter, I want to just confirm, you received those, the fi- the follow-up review?
I did, thank you.
You did?
Yes.
Um, so the remaining items were um, uh, let's see, that, there was a light pole that was um, approved on the plans further west towards the building, and during construction, uh, with the as-built review, um, it was found that that light pole was moved to the east side of the parking lot, uh, and there is a slight light trespass uh, into the property to the east, which is uh, has utility um, power lines and such, um, Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, so the Fussin O'Neil said that plans provided show there's a small amount of light trespassing onto the abutting property. The area of light trespassing appears to be located within a run of overhead utilities. In addition, in the review of the site, there was a small hill blocking the site from the abutting neighbor. Fussin O'Neil feels the light trespass is minimal and may not influence the abutting neighbor. It's at the discretion of the planning board to allow the light pole to remain It's at the discretion of the planning board to allow the light pole to remain in the constructed location. And in uh Peter's response, he had included a um. Uh updated photometric plan section showing the uh slight light trespass. So that is the first uh remaining. Uh issue. Secondly, um. The site, the concrete sidewalk does wrap around the um side of the building as proposed on the approved plans. Um during the site, uh during the sidewalk, it was noticed that the sidewalk ramps down the. The corners and connect to the asphalt drive. It was also noticed that concrete continues further down the south side of the building, however. It is in the utility pad for multiple large utility fixtures and does not appear to be so. Um that was addressed by Peter Bemis and then um. Although the sidewalk limits are being repurposed for transitory storage by the occupant. The public has limited access to the rear of the repair facility and pedestrian travel paths are not impaired. So during the sidewalk, Fussin O'Neil did notice some of the equipment blocked the sidewalks and impaired travel, however, we agreed, they agreed that these areas are not for public access. And do not appear to require pedestrian access. In addition, access from the building has not been impaired. It is discretion of the planning board to allow the sidewalks and equipment. To remain as constructed. So I just want to also point out that the as-built was not just for the modification. But the as-built was for the entire project that had been built many years previously. So predominantly, the west side of the project had already been constructed. For many years and it's the east side where the detention basin was put underground and the expanded parking lot was the main update. To the facility. Uh and then there is a comment about the accessible ramps do not have appeared to have been installed per the approved site plans. Um and Peter responded that the accessible compliant areas access is available to the primary entrances of the facility to which. Um Fussin O'Neil responded ADA access is provided as required. It's at the discretion of the planning board to allow the ADA ramps to remain as constructed. Again, those we have been on the building for quite some time. Um during the site visit, it appeared that loam was not installed along the eastern portion of the site. The area appears to be topsoil with gravel mixed throughout and they provided photos from any of these in their initial review. Um so uh. Fussin O'Neil said that a large area within the eastern portion was observed to be lacking the grass cover due to recent construction activity and minor areas erosion were noticed. To ensure the site is fully stabilized and will not have any further erosion, it is recommended that the planning board request the applicant. In conjunction with the contractor, monitor the seeding throughout the summer months. If the seeding has not been um taken. If, I'm sorry, if the seeding has not been taken prior to the fall planting session has not taken, meaning it hasn't grown. It's confusing now. Um it will be at the discretion of the planning board to require the applicant restabilize areas of erosion. And reseed areas as required to ensure proper grass cover. And then the last thing I want to point out and. I had spoken to Peter about this previously is that there was a handicap sign installed. Um but the photograph. Showed that it was a wooden post, kind of a temporary sign type post. And Peter, you had indicated to me that the app, the owner uh was willing to or. Is going to put a s- a metal post there as was required by the construction detail included in the approved plans.
That's right. And and uh if that work hadn't been done yet, he did purchase the post and he purchased a steel sign as well, an aluminum sign. Because the sign that we had there was a uh was a plastic sign.
Yeah, it was more of a temporary sign.
So both, both items have been uh acquired. They, they, I thought he was going to do the work. I, it could already be done. I don't have evidence of it, though.
So um these as-bills, I believe, were provided within the six-month timeframe that was in the condition of the modification of major site plan. Um however, these still, these, a couple minor issues still need to be um addressed. Um so, how the planning board wants to handle that.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, good evening.
Is there anything you want to add before we go through the board?
Yeah, yeah, I ju- just that, you know, I would like to try to get this processed. Um we did have a a meeting with the conservation commission to get my release from them. And um one of the members had noticed that there was also a a scar on the side. It was actually where the um waddles had been placed. During the construction period, so there was really no turf growth at all through the stretch where the wattle actually sat. During the uh fall planting season. So we did get some grass growth, but not, not um. I, I, I wouldn't call it um a, a good job. I would call it a, an adequate job because there's turf growth. So there's no erodible surface, but it didn't come out very well. So I actually brought a landscaper in who, who does work for us on, on some other projects. And uh we, we over seeded the entire area. That work was done. I think the day after the conservation meeting, because I told the contractor I was going to backcharge him for the work. Um so we, we've had some pretty good weather uh for growing grass, which we didn't have in May, uh as you may recall. Uh May was a pretty dry month. Uh June has been um pretty much a wet month so, so far. So um. I fully expect to get some turf growth. Um I, I, I'd like to, if I can, close this out administratively with you folks. Uh and then you could allow staff to issue it um as a final to us, but I'll leave that to your better judgment. Uh I just would really like to put the job to rest. The as-built ours supplied. Um he did purchase the proper signage for the handicap. And the little bit of light trespass, I gave you two documents, one to show you what it looked like from the approved documents. Because we didn't design this. And then I took the as equal rab light fixture from their website and put in the um the template. For it, um this, a slightly larger trespass um with that. But it, again. It, it shouldn't be, you know, that they had any trespass. We told, we showed them where to put the light fixture. We staked it out for the contractor. Somehow it got put on the east side of the site, not where we had put it. I have no idea why other than the fact that it's there. Um and I would rather have the parking lot illuminated than, than shutting it off and not illuminating it at all, so. Uh that's what I have to say. I, I thank you for your time and, and look forward to you folks releasing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
So Peter, regarding the light trespass. It seems like your assertion is that the butter that is uh being trespassed upon by the light. Um is just using the site. Um for, they, they, they don't plan to improve the site or occupy the site with any people, so.
Yeah, it's Boston Edison. So, so it's, it's a, uh, it's a right-of-way. Um the northern section of this is actually via easement. They don't own the fee. It, they just happen to own the fee on the south side of Route nine there. Um so I, I, I would not anticipate Boston Edison having any future plans for a strip of land. To, to use for any purpose other than to invade their utilities. The only reason why I'm bringing it forward is that because that's who the butter is. If, if it wasn't that, that wasn't the case. I would come up with a different solution to the problem.
Have they been notified about this?
The light trespass? Uh huh. No, I, I'll notify them if you'd like. I, I don't know um who I might send it to, but. It's um, it's, it's really not that impactful. If you were to stand there and look at this fixture, um. You, 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 you wouldn't see a, a big difference between, um it's just where the cutoff shield is in the light. It just can't cut it off. That close to the lot line. It's, it's physically impossible, other than the block, the light fixture itself.
What is going to be, what is or is going to be the use?
On the abutting property?
No, on your property. Sorry, I moved on to the next thing.
Okay, so, so this is, this is uh T and L Auto and, and, and he has a subtenant there that, that does uh car uh restoration work, but um.
Right.
Commercial automotive, I mean, is what the activity is here.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, that seems okay. The ADA, it's a little disconcerting that the ramps are not where they were on the plans, Peter.
Um we didn't design, uh yes, it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, 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 the original design was done by Cornerstone. Uh we picked this project up, Karina had uh through, through the approval process and insisted that the as-built work be tied to the overall project. Because it was prop- not properly vetted uh prior to us coming in for a modification, so we, we pretty much picked up the pieces and, and did the entire project. So what they did is they just relocated the ramp. Um frankly, it's, it's actually probably in a better position than it would have been where they were being proposed. Because it's at a terminus point uh closer to where the handicap parking spaces are, so with the handicap pedestrian comes from the parking space. They come to the terminus location and they come up the ramp. Typically, I find that ramps that are located in the middle of sidewalks. Present somewhat of a tripping hazard for the rest of the folks who don't bother to look where they're, where they're walking. So um. If you were to go to the site, I think you would find that it's actually not in a bad spot. It just happens to be not where the original design. By Cornerstone had provided it to be.
Uh so for number eight, how large of an area are we talking about for the loam?
Yeah, we, we reseeded the entire uh east side of the site, so, so it was probably. Eight thousand square feet. It, but it, it is a growing grass? Yes, all of it had grass growth. It just was not as thick. Is, it, it was not a manicured lawn. Let's put it that way. He doesn't have irrigation there. So, so um the planting, I believe, was done late fall. So the seed was there, but we did not have. The, the wet spring we had in April, the temperatures were not sufficient to grow grass. And then what, what we did have was a dry month of May where the temperatures were good, but it was way too dry.
I mean, I'm, I'm personally okay with this as long as there's an understanding that the proponent is going to. You know, maintain that in good faith and make the best effort possible to.
Okay.
Be in compliance.
I, I, I'm before you tonight because I, I went out there and personally took care of it because I wasn't going to appear before you without it being done. So I'll give you my personal assurance that there'll be grass growth there. That's the same thing I said to the conservation commission. You know, I was waiting for the contractor to do it and it wasn't moving fast enough and I was frustrated by it and said, okay, fine. I have a mechanism to do this. We'll backcharge you.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Holahan?
Hi, good evening, Peter. Uh I have no questions. I'm, I'm comfortable with their um with peers addressing it. Uh all of Fussin O'Neil's comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Maria?
Hi, Peter. It's Debbie. Um I'm concerned about the ADA ramps also, but I was just listening to what you were saying and checking out photos and um. Kind of agree with you. Sometimes the ramps that are right in front of the door, which I think is what the Fussin O'Neil uh letter says, not right in front of the door. Maybe it's a longer distance to travel with a wheelchair, so I don't know how that, you know, plays out, but I. Do find that it's out of the way. I wish they built it in the right spot, but I'm okay with it and I'm also okay with the other um things that you're taking care of. I just want to say thank you. I only had a question on the propane tanks and what's with the propane tanks? It says that. They're, they just, I'm not even sure if you, they needed, I guess they needed to be on the original plan and they were not, but.
Correct. Yeah, they, they, they had thought they would use gas. Um it, my building's on Route nine and, and we thought we would have natural gas as well. This section of Route nine has a pressure system that uh will not allow any new connections. So with, so when they did the original design, there was nothing provided for heat. Uh because I think they thought they were going to tie into gas and then when they didn't, they didn't come back to see you folks to talk about where they put it. They just went to the plumbing department. Uh through, through the plumbing inspector and basically said, okay, we're going to have a heat source. It's propane. And then they just met all of the minimum requirements for that. Uh so again, process wasn't good, you know, just like the handicap ramp. They should have come to see you. They didn't. So um I, I get it, but that's, that's kind of a standard is to use gas tubes like that and then to put ballards around them to protect them.
And there's, there's no covering or anything for them? They just sit out there like that?
Yeah, that's pretty much standard. Uh again, you, there, there are underground, like for your home. Typically, if you're going to do a, a, a large tank, it'll go in the ground. If you do five hundred and smaller, typically they're on the ground, even for your home.
Okay, no, I, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for coming in. Um I'm comfortable with uh the discussion tonight. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. So um, did you re-loam when you um seeded?
I did, because um I, I actually chuckled when I saw Fussin O'Neil's comments that he, he called it gravel loam.
Yeah.
That was probably a, a goo- a good descriptor for it. Um I, I think he must have gotten a really good deal on this, the contractor got a really good deal on this loan. Uh we brought in screen loam. Uh.
Okay.
Green loam, you know, that does have some small pebbles and rocks in it when you screen it to the right screen. Um I, I would say that the loam that was used was, was far from being superior.
It, it looks mostly gravel, less loam, more gravel.
Correct.
Which, which may explain why the grass didn't grow.
Right, right. And then if you look, so if you're traveling on Route nine east, you'll, if you look to your right, you'll see um, we covered it with straw as well. So that, you know, that, that's what you might see when you go by, so don't be alarmed that, that it's just straw over all of the seeded areas. Again, hold, hold, hold the moisture content in.
And that um ADA ramp that is in the back of the building, does that go around to the front? I'm trying to figure out where that is.
No, it's, it's not in the back. It's, it's on the, it's on the west, so it's on the northwest side of the, the building and. The original proposal was for them to be ramps in the front and again, what I find with those sorts of ramps are that they. People are walking along a sidewalk and then their, their foot drops because there's a, there's a ramp there. So it. Again, when we designed those, we, I would have probably said, we can do this one of two ways and we would have recommended the terminus location. Because now, even if you're walking, you, 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 you have no problem going down that ramp. Uh you know there's a ramp there for a pedestrian that's at foot. And then handicap person knows to go to that location from the spaces because the spaces are at the west end.
Oh, okay. All right. So you'd be okay with um? The planning board making sure that that grass takes?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. If, if you could administratively process, I have no problem working with staff to, 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 you know, bring it to conclusion. I'm, I'm, I'm expecting to do the same thing with conservation at the upcoming meeting with them.
Okay, I'm, I'm all set with everything else. Anybody else in the audience? Anyone in, um, so?
Um Peter, on, I, I'm not sure I gave you that comment beforehand, but there was a date in the um. As-built note.
I don't have my plan with me. I just have the, the cover letters.
So in the note, it says engineering design consultant has. Engineering design has completed this site as-built and finds that the as-built site conditions specifically constructed in accordance with the approved site plans by engineering design consultant dated. To twenty-four, twenty-one, and I think it's supposed to be May twenty-fourth, twenty-one.
Oh, I, I, I'll be happy to fix it.
Can you just check that and make sure? Because I think that makes a difference when somebody looks back in the future and the approved plan has a different date. And I just. Okay.
So do you need a vote from us?
Well, you have a bond, um I believe with us, so it would um, to bring closure to this, you, you would have to vote to, to close this out.
Uh we have a bond, you said?
I, I thought we had a bond. We have, we have something with you folks to close this out. Administratively.
No, I, let me just look at the decision real quick. I don't recall. Maybe I'm wrong here. Do you recall a bond? I don't recall a bond. Peter, I don't recall a bond for this project. Do you recall a bond? I don't recall a bond, Peter, I don't recall a bond for this project. I just know the review fees that we used all the way to the end, because we used some of the, um, leftover SWIP money to do the follow-up review.
I'm, I'm sorry, ju- just a certificate of compliance, uh, Karina, I'm sorry, that, that, we just still need a formal vote on that.
Yeah, so in accordance with one seventy-four, ten J for compliance, planning board should vote to accept the, um, as-built, and you could add the two conditions that the, um, the grassed area should be grassed by a certain date and that the handicap sign, is that sign already installed with the new post?
I, 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 he bought it, I saw, I saw the post and the sign, I know they're there at his shop, uh, I don't know what they're in, I don't want to say that to you tonight and be wrong.
No, that's okay.
They will be done, though.
Those two require, I would recommend that the grass area take growth and that the sign be installed by, um, it should be six months, because summer season's here, and I, may- maybe sooner, maybe by the fall, maybe by October or something like that.
Okay, so the, the motion is for, um, the planning board to approve the as-bills for six dash eight Turnpike Road, conditional on the grassed area growing grass, and the handicap sign being properly installed within a six-month period.
Second. Do we, do we need to be more specific on the grass that we?
Yeah.
It has to take by the fall planting season or other, or will have to be reseeded?
That would probably be helpful, because it's kind of open if we just say grass, and we should say which area, say the east slope will work. The east side of the property.
Can I just say as, as amended? Yep, as amended.
Second, as amended.
So by the fall?
Yeah.
Season.
As per, uh, Fosun O'Neill recommendation.
That's it. And that's in regards to the, the grass area.
Grass area.
On the east side. I'll write it up in the vote, so it's very clear, Peter, and then we'll get you a copy of the notice of vote to town clerk.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Great, alright, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Next item on the agenda, planning board appointments and recommendations to committees.
So, um, Colleen sent out a sheet that identified the appointments for this, upcoming expiration date, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And we have, um, a deed research committee to reappoint Mimi, Jesse Stein and Freddie Gillespie, and Colleen indicated that, um, all three that they were interested in, uh, being reappointed. So in, um, if you want to do that, we can, you could vote to appoint, um, those three members to the deed research committee.
So moved.
Second.
With expiration to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
So that was five yeses? Right? Okay, good, alright. Uh, the next was the Public Works, what do you see? Yes, Public Works Planning Board, um, Sam Stivers, who is attending this evening, indicated interest to, uh, be reappointed, for the planning board seat to the Public Works Planning Board, um, which is a two-year term, correct?
So.
Three, it is a three-year term, yes, three-year term, I'm sorry, um.
So moved.
Second.
Um, for discussion.
Sorry.
Um, oh, no, no worries, um, I'd like to hold off on this one. I don't think there's any, um, risk of them meeting before our next meeting. And, um, I'd like confirmation on whether Sam can, sit as a select board member to advise himself as a select board member. And I know that there was discussion of that in the past, but it's, uh, it still concerns me.
May I speak to that?
You may.
Thank you, Sam Stivers, a member of the Select Board and, uh, Public Works Planning Board, but for the next week or so here, I guess. Um, I actually was interested in that question and I did speak with the Attorney General's Office when I was originally appointed. And they confirmed that there was no conflict there, since they're independently appointed boards. The Select Board doesn't appoint anybody to the Public Works Planning Board, so, uh, I did ask the question, that's what they said. Uh, maybe we could talk to town council about it if there's any other question, I guess.
Okay.
That, that is my view, but if there's another follow-up step, I'd be certainly supportive of, um, you know, further investigation. I'm not sure where else you go at this point.
I do recall prior town council having given some kind of feedback on this at the time, I just can't recall. It might have been an email and Sam, I think you were copied on it too, when you were first appointed, question came up as well. Um, and, and, and in my recollection, there wasn't a problem, but to be sure, we could check that file.
So were you on the Select Board when you were first appointed to the Public Works Planning Board?
I don't think I was, I can't quite remember, I've, I've been reappointed once, I think, when I was on the, like, where I can't, I can't remember, I can double-check that.
Somebody was, though, somebody was on a board and there was a question to town council, we'll have to check. I remember that.
Yeah, I'd like to just hold until our, our next meeting, I don't think that you're, you're not going to meet in the next two weeks, are you?
I'm not aware of a pending meeting. That's a, a risk.
Thanks, Sam.
So. What if, so, sorry, I'm just asking, does the chair have the authority to, shoot down?
No, I don't, it's a vote of the board.
So you're just expressing your,
My opinion.
Discussion point.
Yes.
May I engage in the discussion?
You may.
Okay. Uh, Debbie, do you want to, do you have any comments about this appointment? Since you're on the board, I would kind of defer to you on your opinion.
I, I mean, I like to check the box and make sure that it's okay with town council, I thought this was already checked also at some point in the past. So I certainly don't mind holding, just, just to be able to confirm and, um, to balance things out. I also have, uh, you know, en- enjoy working with Sam and think he's done a, you know, a, a great job in trying to move, the, the Public Works Planning Board to at least meet to discuss some topics. So, um, I think where I fall is if there's any doubt, I think it's probably just best to check with town council, I hope that can be quick.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest if Sam could reach out to town council and ask if he's allowed to, um, be appointed. That's what, I think that's what the prior person did too, when they had a question, they reached out. And you can, it's more direct, and then you would report back with a memo or an email from them. Or I can just simply request it from town council, either way.
You're okay with that? Okay, in that case, I withdraw the motion, thanks.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Comment was since the planning board's the appointing authority and the chair asked the question, it would seem to me more appropriate for the planning board to reach out, ask the question. I'd be happy to, but.
Okay, I would just suggest it in case that's something you preferred to find out.
So, um, can I just make a comment to that?
Sure.
Based on some of the prior discussions, Sam, given the fact that you have a direct line from a prioritization process, it might be most expeditious if you were the one to ask the question. That's my two cents.
Are you all right with that, Sam?
Okay.
So just to be clear, Sam, you will check first, and if you don't have success, then we will follow up with a request. Okay, thank you, thank you, Marnie. Uh, the next group is the Master Plan Implementation Committee, um, all expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, that would be, um, Mr. Sam Stivers, um, Ms. DeMora- Debbie Demoria, Catherine McKee, William Warren and Judith Watson, all reported back to Colleen that they were interested in being reappointed. To the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
So moved.
For a one-year term.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Okay. Now, uh, we come to a few that are planning board recommendations to the Select Board for appointments. Um, so, uh, with Andrew leaving, um, town, not as notorious as it sounds, um, there's an opening for the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Um, his term was expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, it's a three-year term. Um, so if anybody was interested in taking up that role, um, you might have to still figure that out, and we still have January, I mean, uh, June twenty-seventh meeting.
So a question, because, um, this is an appointment to a, um, existing term. And I still have to get reappointed at, on next year, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it expired, the current term, the current person's term would have expired June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And again, it's a recommendation to the Select Board.
So, uh, make the motion that, uh, the board recommend Lisa Brascio for, to be the Planning Board Representative, to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second with discussion.
Go ahead, Marnie.
Um, yeah, Ms. Brascio, is that of interest to you?
Yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting, I would be happy to do it unless there was somebody else that wanted to.
Thank you. Which leads us to, is there anyone else? Looks like you, Lisa. Any more discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
And Lisa abstains?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, yes, go ahead.
I was sorry, go ahead, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I was just going to go ahead and make the motion.
Oh, okay, it's the Metro West Regional Collaborative, MWRC. Uh, Mimi has, uh, is currently the representative to the MWRC. Any more to point, uh, Planning Board Recommendation to Select Board.
So, um, make a motion to reappoint, uh, recommend reappointment of, uh, Mimi Latrell, for the Metro West Regional Collaborative.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Um, discussion? I would say I'm happy to do it and I've really enjoyed it, unless anyone else wants to take that. I see none, all in favor of Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes. Demuria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
And next we have the, um, Planning Board Representative to Sharpsey South Road Housing Community Partnership Committee. And it's currently, um, Jesse Stein, which expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And this is a three-year term, hopefully it's twenty-twenty-four. Oh, it does expire, oh, that's not the right number there?
No, I, I, I double-checked and.
Okay, so Ju-
He doesn't need to be reappointed.
Oh, I have an old list.
Is, am I on there till twenty-twenty-four?
Uh, we're going to quickly look at the website notes. It's fixed, I mean, it says expires twenty-two. Oh, mine, mine's outdated, I guess. Okay, um, Colleen's just going to quickly look, so, um, let's see here, twenty-three, twenty-four. Jesse expires twenty-twenty-four, that's correct, so you're, you're still, you're stuck, you're still stuck, still appointed.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, and then, um, uh, the Sharpsey Capital Planning, twenty-one Highland Street, a Fovey Housing Subcommittee was dissolved, it was going to be dissolved, by the Select Board according to Dorian Jazins- uh, Dorian Jazinski, who is the Sharpsey Chair. And that's a subcommittee, and then we have the Planning Board Representative, um, or representative from the town to, um, Metropolitan Area Planning Committee with the NAPC, which is currently Debbie, Demoria, which, um, you're all set. You don't expire till June twenty-eight, twenty-five, so that's on the list, but it was carried over, so you're good too. Alright, sorry about that.
Which brings us to planner's report.
Okay. Okay. So this update. Just an update that the, um, AG approved the twenty-twenty-three ATM, uh, annual town meeting bylaw changes, which included, um, changes to the zoning bylaws effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, Article thirty, stormwater management, and Article thirty-one, uh, WFP, Wetland and Flood Pain Plane District that were brought forward by the Conservation Commission, and change to the general bylaw effective June fifth, twenty-twenty-three, Article thirty-two, correction of non-substantive Scrivener and formatting errors. Then, um, you may have noticed, we have a new website that was launched, um, it's going to take a little time to get everything back in order. Everything is mostly there, but we just need to reorg and fix it, and each department has to kind of fine-tune their own website a little bit. So, um, town clerk is, is, um, probably was very heavily impacted by this, because they used it a lot. Um, I had forwarded to you information about, um, housing article that came from Claire to Al Hamilton to Dory and Jazinski to, you guys, I thought it was interesting to read that article about, um, housing conditions. State, um, was that, uh, that, um, job descriptions, that's just a carryover, from the prior meeting, um, we're working on it, there's any changes on that. And, um, the open space inspections, the field work, um, it's my understanding was done, um, Friday and Saturday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday this past week. Um, so they're working on a draft report, and once that comes in, I'll forward that to the Planning Board members to take a look at. Um, and we expect a, um, substantially completed report by June thirtieth, with, um, a presentation sometime in the early fall timeframe, uh, when people are back from vacation. Then we have, um, there's no word on special town meeting other than it's October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, we will place article, placeholders for the downtown district and accessory apartments by right. Um, performance evaluations, I'm working on preparing those, they're due Thursday. Uh, I was hoping the planning board would agree that Mimi can work with me on those during this week. And then once they're prepared, I'll send a copy to all the planning board members for any comment, but I do have to get them into, um, personnel by Thursday. So, I'm feverishly work on those, uh, that's the same format as last year. The board's okay with that, you all, it sounds like you are, okay. Um, anything else I'm forgetting? No, I think that's it, um, and I don't believe, um, we have complete minutes. Um, and I don't believe um, we have complete minutes ready yet. Um, our recording clerk uh, was moving this past week, so she was a little bit inundated with that. So she'll be um, catching up on um, the three that we have listed here. And then I sent her an email on the rest that have to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. So you can expect um, a several meet meeting, two or three meeting minutes at the twenty-seventh. And we've been pretty caught up. And there just was this little bit of law.
Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, in person. Not on Zoom.
Uh, I think it's a hybrid. I'm not mistaken. So it's in person or via. But um, that meeting was scheduled for the twenty-seventh. So our next meeting is Ju- Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, um, twenty twenty-three. Um, starting at six thirty PM, the new starting time. Uh, it was changed from Monday, because we could have town council and um, the applicant for forty forty-two's attorney, Central Street Attorney.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, I saw a bunch of new notices for um, June twentieth for tree hearings on a bunch of new trees. Is that a joint hearing?
Oh, I am sorry. Yes, I failed to mention that. So um, there is a meeting, a consolidated meeting with the planning board and the Select Board at the June twentieth Select Board for um, national grid trees to be
Hazardous mitigation plan.
Yeah, that are considered part of the hazardous mitigation plan. And these are on scenic roads, therefore it's a consolidated. Um, you'll note that the application says uh, mass electric. They changed it to that, because one of the VPs signed with authority to sign. Um, so June twentieth, Select Board. I believe the legal ad was six thirty PM, but that's been posted and it's been in the newspaper.
Yep.
And we verified the publications.
And will we have a call?
That's the question.
Not sure.
Karina, do you know what time the hearing is posted for?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, thank you.
Not six thirty? Are you sure it's not?
Seven thirty, I got it from um, Melanie.
Melanie, okay. So it is posted for seven thirty, and you can probably um, confirm that we have a copy of it at the bottom of the stairs on the bulletin board. But seven thirty, there's a lot of live trees. Okay. Thanks, Marnie. I all right.
All set. Motion to a good, motion to adjourn?
Second that motion to adjourn.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lee Han, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Terry.
Have a good night, Lisa.
Thank you. Back to vacation.
Bye, Lisa.
Bye-bye.